The one time I almost failed, Katie. Ready to roll?
Ready. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is a work session, Monday, February 25th, 2019, 4:30 PM, in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers at City Hall. So, for the proposed regular agenda for March 4th, first we're gonna have some Mayor's Awards. Number two is a public hearing, consideration of 2019 A Amendment to Urban Renewal Plan for Burlington Consolidated Union, Union Consolidated Urban Renewal Area Related to Use of Incremental Property Tax Revenues for Public Improvement.
I suppose I need to do this, don't I? Do you want to know how much I've thought about this meeting package?
That doesn't make me feel good.
No, it doesn't, does it?
Or is it?
At least not since last week. So, the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment is specifically for the addition of using TIF funds to do a demolition with the former Police Department building. With that in mind, this might be a kind of a go-ahead while we're doing this, go-ahead and have the presentation from, I don't even know how it's listed on here.
They're at the back, aren't they? He's number five on the discussion.
We would not be disappointed.
You wouldn't be disappointed if we, so if we had them come up and, you want to come up and?
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and, since it relates to-
Talk about this, because these are gonna tie together. This is something, we'll go ahead and do the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment and get this on and listed as a potential project for funding the demolition. But Zach has come up with an idea for, why don't we take another, and Jesse is pushing and working with him to look at alternatives to try to get, do a development, seek development proposals on this site as an alternative over the next couple of months. So, if you'd like to come forward and do that.
I'll let Jesse give a little background first and then I'll jump in after.
Jesse Caston Terrace Real Estate Group. So, originally, last year, we had listed the police station. We had a buyer in mind, which is why we did it. We didn't really market the property that much. We signed a purchase agreement on it. That didn't work out, so that just came back recently. So, Zach had brought up, hey, why don't we look at an RFP for there? You know, really, so we're gonna look at, and we'll go through a couple of deal points. We'll actually have the RFP for you guys to look at next week, just so you know. But i- it's gonna be around a three-month process. We'll put it out there, request for proposal is what we're looking for. So, we're gonna have a minimum purchase agreement amount. And that, what we've set, and like I said, we can take some discussion on this, but what we set is a hundred thousand dollar purchase agreement on it with one substantial completion of the, so whoever comes back with a proposal, one substantial completion or demolition, whatever they decide to do, with that is done, then we would rebate back a hundred and fifty thousand. So, it's actually incentive for somebody to come forward and develop that property or demo it if they have other plans, you know, whether it be the property next to it or something else. It's, you know, this property for the city to demo it is gonna, they put in there a half million dollars for the budget. So, we felt like this is a better use of, you know, if we can actually have something happen there. And with the RFP process, we're actually putting it out there and we're saying, okay, this is, we're gonna give our best effort here, you know, on, on trying to get somebody to develop it. So, I, I feel like, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's kind of our best opportunity to say, yes, we're gonna at least try to do this before we just say, let's demo it.
What, what were some of the hang-ups that the previous potential buyer had? And are those hang-ups gonna be things that a new buyer are gonna be able to overcome?
I, I don't think so. I don't want to talk too much about the last one, because there was, so the building next to it, you know, they kinda had to have those work in tandem, I guess, to get it. There were some timing issues. There was a little bit of work in the other building that had came up later that was figured out during a Phase Two study. I don't foresee any of those issues as far as with another develop. I don't know if we're gonna have somebody come forward or not. I, I feel like we are gonna get some proposals. That's kind of a total guess, like I said, and I feel like this is the right approach to go, because it gives the opportunity for us to say, yes, we are, we are, we want to try to do something before we just say, let's, let's demo the building.
Okay.
Part of the terms, and see, we talked about this last week, the idea that somebody is putting forth and putting a hundred thousand dollars forward. They have some incentive to get something done. But us on the backside saying, you get this project completed and we're giving you a hundred and fifty thousand. It's actually the city ultimately giving fifty thousand into the project. It's less than spending five hundred thousand to demo a lot and then having a lot that isn't worth five hundred thousand. It's something that we can try to go after and get this done. I think that we're, we'd have to work out on the backside how we would have some clawback provision built within the agreement. So, similar to what we did the last time and why we have the property back, that they had a timeframe in which they had to take action. And if they had started the process of moving forward with their construction, they had a timeframe in which they had to get a demolition complete or rehab completed. We'd have to have that same type of thing go on if we are able to successfully get someone interested in developing this property. Is that kind of fairly good at?
Yeah, I think that, do you want to talk?
Yeah, I can. Zach James, Assistant Director at Southeast South Planning Commission. Just to go back, when I had kinda heard about the previous development, not moving forward, I just emailed Jim and Jesse and Eric and just kinda posed the question of, is there additional marketing? Or can we do a request for proposal or something like that, just as a, as a next step? I didn't know that there were, there was discussion at that time about demolition. But, I mean, from my perspective, again, getting back to a half million dollar cost, it's pretty expensive and you've got something that's not, and it's not falling down tomorrow by anything. So, you might as well spend an extra opportunity to actually try, try and find something when it hasn't really been marketed to this point. So, so, we're willing to put that RFP together, working with Jesse and the city. And like, like they said, you know, we met, just how I met a few weeks ago, we met with Jim and Eric on Friday and came up with some of the terms that we discussed here. So, that's the main thing that probably concerned you guys is if you're okay with the terms. But as far as a process of to go, it is, we'd present something next week and then we'd have about, I believe we had May 28th as a due date back, so a little over two months timeframe. And then there's a process with urban renewal and basically disposition of a city-owned property. So, we'd have to go through some public hearing process that you guys would work through. But it'd be about a three-month process in total, if you had the proposals back.
If we get a proposal, if we're able to get a proposal back by the May, end of May timeframe, we'll have to bring that proposal forward to the council for consideration, set a public hearing, have a thirty-day timeframe out there where there could be other potential offers put in on it from that. And then at the public hearing, you could then act on the proposal that you, you have received. Urban renewal process is pretty specific about needing to go through that thirty-day process, but it also gives us the flexibility to take a package of looking at how are we going to develop the community, look at what the proposal is that has been presented to us and say, and on the merits of what it's able to do for a benefit, we have a little bit of flexibility for how we proceed.
If, if in three months, we need to change that number to make it, to provide a better incentive in order to be able, if we don't get any proposals, is that something that we should consider? Or are we kinda starting with the bar low and with the potential of raising it? And if, if somebody comes in at two fifty and does it, well, we're still better off by two hundred and fifty, okay?
I don't know how the wording is on what you're gonna have or whether you're able to accept a proposal like that.
I, I think how we probably were is we put the city's terms up front, but maybe have some verbiage that they could make a, basically a counter offer. I don't exactly how to be worded, but I mean, we could put that in there.
Some of it, if you were to find that there isn't an interest, we have two different routes at that point. If you find that there had been an interest, if the terms might have been different, that could be brought forward for discussion. The other side is if you really don't, we don't find an interest in it. The process that we're going through with the public hearing on the Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan, it's setting in place the authorization to do the demolition and use TIF funds. We're gonna have the funds borrowed with the, the bun, the borrowing that we do here over the next couple of months. So, we'll have the funds available to proceed with that yet this fall or be, depending on the, I would hope that we'd be able to get through that process yet this fall, if that's the route that we're doing. But the funds are there and available to do that. If this project is successful, the process that Zach and Jesse are trying to lay out here before us and we're able to get this building into someone else's hands and developed in a different way, the five hundred thousand that's borrowed through the TIF funds will, will be repurposed either to another project that's already been listed as TIF-eligible or would go back, I guess, to just essentially eliminate the debt that had been borrowed. So, it's not like there's, it's caught in limbo. We'll have a way to, to address reallocating it.
And to answer your question, yes. I mean, so as we're, you know, we're gonna get feedback from anybody, developers that we send this to. So, we're gonna have a pretty master list that we send this to. And if there's somebody that says, hey, you know, this project makes sense, but this is what we're looking for, we will ask them to, to still bring that proposal in, even if it doesn't meet all their criteria, because we do want to have some kind of baseline out there. That way, you know, it's not just, we, we want to try to have some kind of guidelines that we're putting everybody to. But if somebody else wants to propose different terms, they will have the opportunity to come to City Council and propose what their idea is and why their terms would look different from our guidelines that we set out. So, the short answer is yes.
Great.
I like it. I like your enthusiasm. I like the idea. And as I always say, why not Burlington? So, I hope somebody will jump on this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Yep, you're welcome. For some reason, they didn't want to sit here throughout the whole meeting.
What? I didn't say you could leave.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you.
One of the, one of the steps that's involved with the public hearing process on an Urban Renewal Plan Amendment, one of the things that we're required to do dur, prior to that, was to have held an opportunity consultation meeting with the school and county. We had that set for a couple of weeks ago.
We could go Friday.
We could go Friday. We could go this last Friday. Neither entity was present at that, although the school did ask, I know, I don't know if you've got any feedback from either entity. The school did ask some questions in regards to where the project fit. In terms of the kind of questions that they were asking, they were wondering, is this increasing the amount of TIF value that we're capturing? No, it isn't. We're still capturing the same TIF value. Is it going to pull, and what they're looking at, is it gonna pull additional money away from the schools? No, no, it isn't. But at the same time, part of what we're looking at, we've tried to have a policy where we're using two and a half million, about that neighborhood, two point four, two point five million worth of TIF revenues towards projects. Up until two years ago, that was all completely allocated to existing debt. We started taking on some TIF projects over the last couple of years and we've got some within our CIP plan. They're, they're built to stay within that two and a half million dollar annual usage of TIF debt. Our TIF value has grown fairly significantly over the last few years in the eight to ten percent range. So, what we're seeing is, is that we've begun a process where we're actually releasing value back to this, to the other entities and we will continue to do that, probably, actually, I think, on an increasing basis over time, given that we're trying to stay at a flat dollar amount that we're asking each year.
Why do we pick two and a half million?
Because that's about where we were when we got to a point where we were actually cash flowing well, where we had revenues coming in that matched our debts, which was, what, three years ago, maybe, in that neighborhood? That was the point where we reached where we had the ability to start releasing. And so, we've been releasing back to the underlying entities, including our general fund. And absent of that, we'd have been in a position where, well, last year, we had to do some cuts to our budget, but we would have had to do more if we hadn't have been doing that. Some of the perspective, and I know that I put a little bit in the, during the budget process in your packets, but it's all overwhelming when I, when I throw fifty pages at you. If you look at, if you look at how much TIF debt we use, we have about ten percent of our overall city value that we use towards TIF projects. It's not the highest percentage user in the state. In fact, it's not the highest percentage user in this part of the state, in this region. But it is on the high side. And if you're to look at the, when, a lot of the comparisons that, that we give here are the towns that are over twenty thousand population. If you look at that basis, the average town in that twenty thousand and over population is using in the seven percent range. So, but you'll see values up to about thirteen percent, others that are using hardly any. Average of seven, and I'd like to see us get a little bit closer to that average. When we're using more, it puts financial stress on our general fund as well as the other taxing entities. So, just some background on that.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions or comments for number two? All right. Next, on the regular agenda, we have a public hearing, consideration of plans and specifications for the 2019 Locust Sewer Separation Project.
We have Matt Wildman with HR Green, who designed these plans here. So, he'll kinda go over it and then we'll talk about the next steps.
Good evening. Matt Wildman with HR Green out of Cedar Rapids. Good to see you again. It's been a little while since I've been here, but we've been patiently waiting to receive CDBG grant money for this project and we received that. So, now we're able to continue moving forward. So, I'm gonna give kind of a brief overview. I think it was a year and a half ago or so, or ago or so, sorry, that I presented some information on sewer separation, why we were doing it. So, I'll give a little bit of a brief background on that and then I'll kinda outline the, the project. You guys should have plans and specs that were available here for that public hearing for review and comment by the public. So, hopefully, you've all at least know they're here, if not looked through them, I'm sure in painstaking detail. So, just a couple of basic terms. I'll go through these just so that you guys know what I'm, I'm talking about. First of all, and this is the rest of the content. Stormwater is simply water that falls on the ground, gets conveyed in pipes, runs off into streams and rivers, basically rainwater that would get. Wastewater would be, wastewater is generated by industries and by homes. That's water that goes down sewer pipes and to the wastewater treatment plant for further treatment. You've got sanitary sewer pipe in most of the city that carries the wastewater. You've got storm sewer pipe that carries the stormwater. And in the Mazel basins, right now in the center of town, there is a combined sewer which conveys both the stormwater and wastewater. Goes to the treatment plant. Most of the time, when there's heavy rain events, there are combined sewer overflows. Influent infiltration, or INI, as I'll refer to it probably a few times in the presentation, is water that seeps into manholes and to pipes. But it's rainwater basically or stormwater that ends up in the sewer that should be running off and shouldn't have to go to treatment because it's clean water. Combined sewer overflows are areas where there are combined sewers. So, there is some component of wastewater that's overflowing into ditches, streams, and ultimately ends up in the river. And sanitary sewer overflows, or SSOs, are instances where the sanitary sewer system gets enough INI in it that it cannot convey all the sanitary sewer to the wastewater plant. So, those are overflows. Those would be considered house backups, manhole overflows and that sort of thing would be overflow. So, if you have any questions on any terms as I go along, I may have missed an abbreviation or something, please stop me if you don't, if you don't know what I'm talking about. So, combined sewer versus separated sewer. On the left is an, is a illustration of a combined sewer where you've got storm drains and house roof drains, sanitary waste, all of it going to one pipe. And there are overflows in that that can go out to rivers, streams or otherwise. A separated sewer, you simply have a storm sewer pipe that's collecting all the clean water or stormwater and a sanitary sewer pipe that connects all the wastewater. You can, again, get those SSOs out of a sanitary sewer and you can get, you don't get CSOs in this type of a situation, even though the overflows are a combination of water. INI or influent infiltration is water that's seeping into the pipes through cracks in the pipe, through tie-ins between the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer. Roots can grow down into pipes and lead pathways for water to get into the pipe. Can come into manholes up at the street where you've got manhole lids that have got holes in them. Water can seep around the, the manholes and into the concrete structure down below through the seams in the structure itself or cracks in the manhole. But any of that water that's not supposed to get in, that's clean water, that's not supposed to get into pipes or groundwater that's seeping into the pipes would be considered INI coming into your system. So, those are issues throughout town, even in the basins that are separated. The Hawkeye Basin, the Cascade Basin, there are areas with a lot of INI getting into those sewer pipes and I'll show you an illustration of that here shortly. Why do we need a separated system or separated system? The administrative consent order was issued to eliminate all CSOs in the system by the year 2025 and also to separate, eliminate SSOs and include storage tanks by 2028. These issues are being addressed both in an integrated plan and a sewer master plan that are in the development stages and should be presented to you later this year at some point. The sewer master plan, hopefully rather soon. We're working on that and getting close to finalizing that sewer master plan. So, that will look at that schedule and determine if that's a reasonable and feasible and affordable schedule and those sorts of things. So, there'll be a lot more information coming on that hopefully to you soon. The advantages of a separate system, less wastewater going to the treatment plant and I'm sure Don would appreciate that at times when it rains, avoiding any SSO or CSO conditions where that sanitary waste is overflowing into areas where it may come in contact with public, where the public has access to that type of thing. So, we want to eliminate those to get rid of the public health nuisance and avoid wastewater flooding in basements through sewer backups where you're trying to get too much water through too small of a pipe and it has to have an outlet somewhere and a lot of times that's in basements. And allow, you can allow reuse of the stormwater for beneficial natural things in the waterway for fish and that sort of thing. The project maps, as you're probably aware, the Hawkeye Basin actually kind of extends through a lot more of town than just a circle, but it's generally the northern and western portions of town. The Mazel basins are, we're in the Mazel basin now, but mainly the, the heart of, of town is the Mazel basin. Cascade would be down on the south end. And those are the three main drainage basins. There are several other basins and sub-basins throughout the city. So, the focus of this project is, is in the Mazel basin, which we looked at all this and we focused right here on the Locust Basin. So, you've got Market Sub Basin, Angular, Locust and South, which that's where Mazel comes from. So, our focus is on the Locust Basin. This currently is a combined system where water, wastewater and stormwater are in the same location, in the same pipe. We have one CSO location down near the river on Main Street there where water, when the water is too much to convey to the plant, backs up in the sewer, overflows and goes directly discharges into the river. This is a fully developed area in town. There's not a lot of space in this area to outlet stormwater pipes, to put in big EQ tanks like have historically been done in, in the Hawkeye and Cascade separation projects. So, a little more challenging of a project to try to fit everything that you need into a small area. So, we looked at taking a little different approach to this area than what was taken in the other ones and putting in a new sanitary sewer system primarily, looking at the stormwater system to make sure there was capacity in there. So, when we're finished in this basin, we're gonna try to have a project where we don't have to go back in and continue to look at some of those INI issues like we're having to look at in the other basins in town. So, any questions to that point? Kind of the little background on the project. So, the Locust Basin, concerns in that basin, very old pipes and infrastructure, a lot of INI. It is a combined system. It does have a CSO. That is one of the things that we do have to look to eliminate. Some of the storm sewers in town are undersized, won't even convey a two-year storm event. So, backup conditions are frequently occurring during rain events and we don't seem to be getting any less rain and any less intense rain as we move forward in time. And also in that basin, as you'll see as we move forward, some poor pavement condition in that basin. So, as long as we're going in to look at some of the sewer pipes and replacing those, looking at the, the highest needs area for some pavement also, since we're tearing up at least half the road in some areas, we were directed by staff to, to look at replacing the whole road with new road in those areas. So, that's kind of gonna be the focus. The, the project is being done from the sewer side, but most of what you're gonna see here is ultimately what's gonna end up in the project that people will see. So, it's gonna, I'm gonna focus a lot on pavement discussion and not so much on the actual sewer. The Locust Basin was chosen because it is the smallest of those remaining basins to be separated. And with us looking at a different type of approach to that, we wanted to focus on a small area and see how effective it is. If we're, if we're taking a little different approach that doesn't work or doesn't have the same level of effectiveness that the, the previous methods had, then we'll take a step back and we'll say, we have a different recommendation for moving forward in the Market, Angular and South separation projects. The sewer master plan, which we're, we're working on now too, makes a lot of assumptions as to the level percentages of removals we'll get. There's peak flows that happen right when it rains. That water's immediately getting out of the sewer. So, in flow metering, you see really high spikes right away when it rains and then when it quits raining, the flow goes back down to normal. We're assuming that we're gonna get a certain percentage reduction in that and that peak flow is what we have to convey in the sewer pipes. So, as we start to reduce that, we can look throughout the city at pipe sizes and everything else and use the results of this to start fine-tuning some of those assumptions and modifying that plan moving forward in time as we go to say, yes, we were able to achieve these levels. No, we got better than this or no, we didn't get as good. So, that affects pipe sizes and everything else in future designs as we look forward to the Market and Angular and South separation projects as well as Hawkeye and Cascade and throughout the city of what we can do in those. So, this is an example of the flow metering here. This is the rain event, this dashed line, and the timing is just a little bit off of when these dates are actually recorded. So, if you imagine this rainfall is happening in conjunction with this spike, this is the Locust Basin right here, spikes right at that rain event. It's about a two-inch rainfall event, so pretty high rain event. The sewer flow immediately comes up and as soon as it stops raining, it drops down. An indicator that this is definitely a combined system, which we know. But on this graph, you can also see a number of the other basins. In, in Hawkeye and Cascade, we've got flow meters there now too. When it rains, they're coming up and they're actually peaking four to five to ten. In some basins, it's almost twenty times the normal base flow on that basin. The water is spiking and coming back down. As we move forward and get this project completed, we're gonna see this peak drop to some level and then we'll be able to know roughly what that peaking factor is. We're expecting about a ninety to ninety-five percent reduction in that peaking factor. And if we get that, we'll be down into around a three to four peaking factor in that basin, which is much better than some of those other basins I've seen. So, we're hoping to lessen that and that will allow us to look at this type of approach in some of the other basins as well, some of the areas where we're, we're flow metering and seeing these very high peaks. We can go in and take a similar approach to those areas as well. Any questions on that graph? The existing system in Locust, this is all combined sewer right now. These little blue dots on there are in-storm intakes. The yellow dots are manholes. But just an idea of how many intakes and everything that we have to collect and get that stormwater somewhere. So, the approach that we are taking here is to have parallel pipes running all the way down to the river. So, the stormwater will go to the river. The sanitary water will go down to this last manhole, which ties into the Market Force Main, which runs out to the treatment plant. So, in the future charts here, you'll, you'll see the areas where we're putting in storm sewer, where we're putting in sanitary sewer and we'll end up with two pipes all the way down to the bottom. I will apologize and don't try to look and understand the definition in these figures because everything is gonna be very small. But I tried to make everything that's important big enough that you'll be able to see what it is. So, this is a cover sheet off the plans. This is the project that we're doing. It's a Locust Basin separation project and we'll be looking for it to have been that soon. In this project, we have, this is the pavement plan for the project. So, these red lines here would be new concrete alleyways. The blue will be asphalt patches throughout those areas. Those are some of the wider streets where we're gonna be able to only take half the street, replace curb and gutter on one side of the street and then do asphalt patches. And the yellow lines here will be new concrete streets that we're putting in, in those areas. And the yellow lines here will be new concrete streets that we're putting in, in those areas. So this is an example of South Street and Ninth Street. This is right next to the school that's there. This is a storm intake in the corner here. It's a very large opening, not a whole lot of protection on that, right on a pedestrian crossing right there. As part of this project, all of the intersections that we're working in will have ADA ramps put in if they don't already have them. And the ones that are in there will be brought to code to the greatest extent possible. Some of the grade in that area, if you're familiar with the area, is steep enough that we're gonna get as close as we can and then we'll apply for a variance with the state on ADA because it's just not feasible in some areas to get the right slopes for ADA access. But we'll still be putting ramps and other accesses in in those areas. This is an example of that intersection, just to illustrate. Right here is that current intake. We're gonna put a new curb intake in there. All the stormwater will be routed around that intersection and into a new pipe, which will be laid on the far side of South, South Street there. I think it's the south side of South in that case. But that's just an example of what kind of the plans look like. I'm not gonna go through all 200 pages of plans or anything for you. But you can see here, we're doing asphalt replacement in these areas and this will remain in place. The sanitary sewer is running right down the middle of the street here. That section of sewer, we're gonna be lining with a cure-in-place liner, which will go into that. So restore like new condition to that pipe and eliminate all those cracks and other places that the water's getting into that pipe. This is the alley between Central and 10th Street. I think this is a barbershop here perhaps. But this alleyway, you can see, is typical of most of the alleyways. Not great condition in the, in the pavement in this area and also not a lot of room to work. So we have to lay a new pipe down that alley, so that alley will be replaced with a new concrete alley in that area. This is one of the other alleys between Fifth and Sixth on the south side of Walnut. Very narrow area, structures right up to the edge of that. There's not a whole lot of room in there where we could just replace half the alleys. So that whole alley will get replaced. That one's not in bad condition, but there's not a whole lot we can do to save and protect that one. This street, I apologize, was taken in the, with the sun shining and lots of shade. But this is, is Seventh Street and it is getting full with concrete replacement. On that street, this is a little better example of the condition of some of the streets in the area. This one also, South Fifth Street, is getting full with concrete replacement, new curb and gutter on both sides. South Street, this street is in good condition, very wide street. So we're just doing a half asphalt patch on that street. Locust Street has been maintained, crack sealed and everything else. Again, a wide enough street, we're gonna be coming down this side of the street, the left side of the street. So we'll just be doing a half, half street there as well. This is Third Street on the south side of Locust. This comes down, or this is going up rather steep off of Locust Street. That road is seeing better days, of course. And there's not a whole lot of, as you get further up, there's not curb on either side and there's a lot of washout in that area as well down those driveways. That street is getting a full width replacement. Here you can see up at the top, looking down to Locust, that you've got no curb and gutter on either side of that street and a lot of washout and stuff occurring. So that street is getting a full width replacement up there. At the top end of Locust, there's just currently a dead end up there, or at the top end of Third, there's currently a dead end up there. We are going to put a hammer handle turnaround up in that area. And it kind of, you can kind of see, this is going south and then there's a turnaround right there. But in this area up there, there's no real good outlet for the stormwater up there. So we're gonna put a, an infiltration basin in up there. That infiltration basin will be basically a rock trench filling this area here with the hash lines in it. Is gonna be a rock area with, it'll have a monitoring well in there to monitor groundwater levels. But it's covered with topsoil, so that will just be a big grass detention basin essentially with rock in it to allow that water to infiltrate into the ground. So it doesn't run off over the hill, down onto, I think that's Walnut, down at the bottom of the hill there. Is that right?
South Street.
Is it south, south down at the bottom there? Okay. I couldn't remember how far we came up there. But so that's, that's the plan in that area and that's one area where we are using some green infrastructure essentially to infiltrate as much stormwater up there as what we can. The storm sewer plan, the, the yellow pipes in here indicate new storm sewer alignment throughout the project. So that's all new, new storm sewer that we'll be putting in. And then this is a sanitary sewer plan. The red pipes here will be lined sanitary. That's where we're gonna reuse the existing pipe in there, restore it to like new condition. The yellow pipes will be the, the new sanitary sewer. So you can see by looking at those, by the time you start up at the top and get down to the bottom, we pretty much have parallel pipes running that whole distance in one way or another. So that gets all the flow down to the bottom as sanitary and as storm sewer. The estimate on the project right now is $5.6 million. $600,000 of that will be a C D B G grant, so that comes off of, of that cost. The rest of the money right now is gonna be funded through an S R F loan. It's my understanding that we'll do an S R F loan for that. And I think that was a rather quick run-through of it, but any questions?
So remind me again, there are what, three or four phases to our sewer separation project, large phases? We've got the Locust, Mazel.
Yep, Market, Angular and South would be the other three large phased projects. We, we have evaluated, we presented kind of a preliminary facility plan type level planning document for all of those, looking at this approach in each one of those projects. The timing of that is extremely long and the cost of that is extremely high. And so we're, we're revisiting that through the sewer master plan, looking at different approaches and different ways to attack those other four, those other three main projects to eliminate those other three C S Os.
So once this one's done, how much of the problem have we taken care of citywide? What percentage, I mean, 40%, 80%? I mean, are the largest projects taking care of a majority of the issue? Or is it just, are we, how much of the problem are we solving with this?
This project takes care of one of the four remaining C S O locations in Locust. And it's the smallest of the, of the Mazel Basins as I, as I discussed. So from a percentage basin basis, when you take Hawkeye and Cascade, the overall percent of town, I'll just run back through those. Looking at how small, you've taken care of most of town as far as the C S Os and the combined sewers is concerned. But you're also now in the most dense, most populated, most fully developed portion of town as well. So the overall cost is a much lower percentage than the percentage of area that's separated.
So the, in much different perspective on how things are being done. The other, the Hawkeye and Cascade, Silver, I can't think what the other basins are. We spent 25 million, I think, total in that, in those. And the, the Mazel is, the way that this is being designed is a 100, 100 million. So this is, this design is a more comprehensive way to approach it, but it's also about four to seven times more expensive than the other way that we were doing it. That being said, if you talk about some of the issues that Mr. Scott raised with water running by his building and what's, what, how do we address a potential flood? What, what's the flood area through the downtown area? Well, Hawkeye Creek is running through there and you look at the pipes and they don't really properly address the, the water flow through there. And that's part of the issue that we had is it wasn't, the, what we spent within the Hawkeye Basin wasn't really adequate to do what needed to be done in that area. This is a completely different approach. It is on the last 25 perc, 25% of town maybe? For area, coverage area of what needs to be done in terms of the system of pipes. That, and, but we're gonna have to go back and do work in the Hawkeye Basin after this. Or actually probably what we'll be trying to do is intermingle it with phases of Mazel as we move forward.
So, so once the Locust is done, what, what would be the next section? Do we have a plan for that? Are we doing the Market or the South or Angular or do we have it decided?
We've got a, we had a facility plan that had it listed out, how to, to work through them. But you know, part of it is we go finish up the master plan. It's working in some other system needs, whether it's lift station replacements, the Mississippi Interceptor. We need to do some work on, again, as I mentioned, in the Hawkeye Basin to, for the pipe that comes through downtown. It's undersized. We have other areas that we need to do. And you know, as we start trying to put all those together and then go to the state and talk about how do we get an adequate schedule? I think the facility plan, what's listed out there, may or may not be the order that ends up actually being done. So it's, we have an identified order within the facility plan, but it may not ultimately be how we end up doing that.
We looked at, we looked at, at going south and Angular and Market just from the perspective of gathering data and evaluating how we were doing it and trying to cut out. Like if we could eliminate the lining out of future projects because we don't get a whole lot of bang for the buck out of that based on what our results are, then that would lower some of those costs. So we're trying to look at it comprehensively. We're delivering a draft of that master plan, a 90% draft to the, to Jim and Nick and Jesse on, and Don, I think on Wednesday this week. We're gonna deliver that draft. And in that, we will lay out that intermingling of projects of what is a, what is a serious need? Where are the, the highest risk areas in town and how do we address those? And still continue to move forward on this because if we spend all the money on Market and Angular and South moving forward, then the rest of the city infrastructure starts to fail at various time periods. Then you're, you're not in a better position in that case at all. So that's what we're trying to balance in the development of a C I P that we'll present to them. And I'm sure very soon be coming back to you guys with a more comprehensive look at what lies ahead. So right now, we've got this opportunity to move forward with Locust and so we're doing that. But the big picture look will be coming in the, in the coming months, very soon.
Matt, I had, I had a question. So we live on a, a pretty hilly town. So that means the water runs where it wants to run. So I like the idea of the green infrastructure to help with that. Now, the one road you talked about, putting curbs, does that help contain the water? If it has curbs on the road versus not the curb, keep it out of the homes? I don't know.
Yeah, it, well, yes. It, it does help convey the water and send it where you want it to go. And avoid it running off the streets and then, like you say, going where it's going to go, running downhill into houses, wherever that would be. I know there's a lot of areas where the road is higher than the houses in town. And yeah, if it just spills off, then yeah, you're running into, that water gets into the ground and then into basements. So yeah, green infrastructure is one component that we are looking at. And I know the EPA is looking at that, where that can be implemented. Because if you can infiltrate that water into the ground and avoid having to convey it, that makes the pipe smaller and that's better because that's a cheaper pipe.
And I like it as the research shows that that, that is helpful. As we move forward with this project, we incorporate more of that in it if we can, if the funds allow for that. I think, I think that's definitely the way to go.
And it is, it is a challenge in these basins because these basins are very dense. Very full. But we are looking at different, we've identified some areas in Locust and applied for and received sponsored project money for that. So there will be some opportunities in that basin to, to get some funding to help with some green infrastructure projects. And the main, the main goal of what we're doing moving forward here is to try to, to verify and validate how the approaches are working. We've got, we last year purchased a number of flow meters and they're out in the system now. And the plan is to kind of move those around and monitor how well implementation of these projects is working to reduce those peak flows on that graph that I showed. If we can get those down to a manageable level and start to project how that will work moving forward. We're trying to look for the best way to spend the money to get the best results in the end.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Hi, I don't have anything.
I would say that we are doing some green infrastructure projects with, because we have the S R F financing, we've got a sponsored project coming up. And I don't know if you have any information on the timing on that, Nick?
We, it's not designed at this point. We have a kickoff meeting, I think you probably got a doodle poll from S R F on that sometime in mid-March. But that, he brought up the funding source, so how are we paying for this project? As you remember, we started this process for C D G B funding back in January. In June, we were notified that we had received the $600,000 C D G B block grant money, which comes with its strings and that is part of the reason why we're finally having this conversation with you. You know, S R F also comes with those same type, it's Davis-Bake and it adds a little bit of percentage on to the cost of the project, but it, it's at a much lower interest rate and it does allow for the sponsored project funding to do those things. So we will be going out to bid here next week. And then you also have a public hearing coming up for the environmental on the S R F review. So you'll, you'll have a couple of public hearings talking about the Locust, but they're for different things, so.
And the sponsored project is gonna be near Grimes School?
That was the planned project to do kind of a bio-swell and kind of an educational impact kind of tied in. On the north side of Grimes, they have a pretty wide right-of-way between, you know, the edge curb and the sidewalk. So we've talked with the school district and they're on board, so it'd be kind of cool.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Okay, next we have number four, public hearing, consideration of fiscal year 2019-2020 budget.
Okay, at your spot should be the handout that I'll go over. This is the budget, budget presentation I'll make tonight and then I'll do it again tomorrow or next Monday at the public hearing too. So if you have any questions, go ahead and raise them if I need to clarify anything or change anything I can. What we're gonna show you is a balanced budget with no tax increase for FY '20. So on page two, it's showing the comparison of revenues by the funds. The general fund is, you know, where police and fire are. You see all the different ones. I know we've gone over in detail the budget. This is kind of more of an overview of, here's the total. So the revenues are decreased this year by about 10 million. And that's based on the capital projects decreased budget we have this year.
Mount Pleasant Street Bridge and Flood Wall, I think, were probably the largest two projects that we had in the previous year.
Yeah, exactly. But other than that, you can see a lot of the revenues are pretty steady. Then on the next slide, I show it broken down by the source of these, the 59 million source. Property taxes make up 21% of that 12 million. TIP financing, we get almost 3 million, which is 5%. What's in that? Non-property taxes are the hotel motel at 800,000, sales tax, which again is also called lost, local option sales tax, 4 million. We have some cable franchising in there for 240 and gambling revenues we get for 200,000. The intergovernmental, that makes up basically our grants that we get from federal, state and local. A big chunk of that 8.4 million is road use tax, we get at 3 million. Backfills in there, that's about 200,000. Our transit grants are also in there for about 700,000. Fire and ambulance grants, we get 720,000. And then if you go over at the top, it shows you the other financing sources. Those are all basically our bond proceeds. So half of it are for capital projects and then 4.9 is for this Mazel project that we were just talking about, that we'll be bonding for through the S R F, so. You can see charges for services in our state budget. Burlington Water Works is also included in here. So of that 18.3 million, Water Works makes up 5.6 million. So then are the rest of the city-only charges for services are 12.6 million, which sewer is 6.8. Solid waste is about 2 million, ambulance 1.4 and then golf and rec parks approximately half a million each, so. Does anybody have any questions on these breakdowns? So next, overall, these are the expenditures that we've budgeted for FY '20, again at 59.7 million. This slide, number four, just is showing it by the function, by program, public safety, public works, what our business types are, what we spend for debt service and capital projects. And then the next one on the pie chart will show you broken down by the type. So 34% of our expenses are wages and benefits. Debt service is 14%, that's basically. Um, debt service is fourteen percent, that's basically our principal and interest payments. Capital outlay is fourteen percent. Commodities is basically another, um, term for supplies. And then contractual services, that twenty million, um, actually Maslow is in that for the four point nine million. And then Waterworks expenses are also in that category too at five point five. So you take those out and those are more of just day-to-day operation expenses. So the proposed property tax rate is sixteen point three three six, three-two, which is a no increase from the prior year. And then here we just kind of show the history, um, of what our tax rate has been for the last ten years. And then on slide seven, it's showing, um, what we actually, where, how the tax is broken down, um, the general fund levy at eight-ten and how much money we get for each of these different components. Um, basically, we levy just a dollar seventy for our employee benefits. We do have the potential to levy more. Um, the remaining of our employee benefits, um, which is about four million dollars is paid with sales tax revenue, um, that we transfer in. So the loss transfer is about two point two million. So we always like to show if you do, um, have a house, that's the taxable value is a hundred thousand, just showing you comparing it to last year, what your tax will be this year. Again, there's no change in the tax rate, but we did have an increase in the rollback, which the state sets the rollback, we have no control over that. But, so that's gonna cause, um, an increase of twenty-one dollars and nineteen cents annually, which is a dollar seventy-seven monthly. So even though our, the tax rate's not increasing, they, everyone will see a slight increase in taxes on this, just based on the rollback. Commercial, the rollback is set at ninety percent, doesn't, it's not gonna change, so there's no change in that value. The, the commercial will pay the same amount of tax on the city rate as they did last year. And then on slide ten, we just kind of like to break down an easier way to see where does my tax dollar goes. So of that nine hundred and thirty dollars, if you had a house valuation of a hundred thousand, here's what it's paying for. A hundred and fifty-eight thou, or sorry, a hundred and fifty-eight dollars is going to fire, two eighty-nine, police, library sixty, parks and rec sixty-five, and that makes up the auditorium, forestry, the pool, day camp, senior center port. Um, debt service is two hundred and sixteen dollars, um, public works forty-three, that includes the transit, engineering depot. Community development, that's our building code enforcement and development department. And then general government or general administration is the rest. That's our city hall, city council, city manager, clerk, um, finance, IT, HR, legal, insurance is there also. So, do you have any questions? On this slide, it's just comparing us to cities with a population of over twenty thousand. Um, what our population is, what's our taxable value, um, what our levy is compared to everyone else's and you can see the, um, the communities that have the higher taxable value just, you know, generally have a lower levy. They don't have to levy as much to get the same amount of dollars in. Um, so we are at the same spot we were last year. We're seventh from the bottom in the average. So you can, like I said, you can see the, the cities that do have the lower taxable value per capita in turn have a higher tax rate. Anything to add, Jim, or?
No, but just a, that is a huge focus. If you think about an Urbandale sitting there with, uh, evaluation that has close to seventy-four thousand of taxable value per person in the community, um, versus us at twenty-eight thousand, they have not quite three times the, the, the dollar value to spread across. I mean theoretically, they could, they should be able to provide the same level of service for a third of the tax levy. So that what you're seeing is they're providing more services essentially. They're spending more on different, different things. They have a whole lot more flexibility than we do. It's just part of life, but.
So we'll just go over some of the factors that are, that impacted this year's budget. Um, this slide, number thirteen, is showing our total taxable valuation was an increase this year of five point four percent. Um, our TIF taxable valuation actually went up ten point one five. I know Jim had talked about that and how we, that makes us be able to release more value each year because the valuation is growing at a faster rate. Um, and then our regular went up four point eight. Um, this is, this is an increase from last year and, which is good. It's definitely helped balance the budget. Um, and then you can see on the right-hand side, the property taxes that we're asking for based on the valuation, it's an increase of six hundred and nine thousand dollars, again, without raising the rate, just based on valuations. So in our, in the current year budgets, um, our health insurance premiums this year are projected to increase two point seven. We do have them budgeted at five percent. Um, and then last year, they were budgeted at five percent and they increased six percent. So, um, I do, on the next slide, we'll kind of show you an overview of what the, the concept we have in our union contract language that we can't have the health insurance go over five percent. Um, also just showing their pension, IPR's, um, contribution, the employer contribution, there's no change for FY twenty. Police and fire, um, pension rate went down slightly for FY twenty. So this spreadsheet, if anybody wants help explaining it sometime, one-on-one is probably easier. Um, but basically what we do is each year, we look at our five percent cap that we have on our health insurance rates and how they cannot increase any further than that. And so, um, we make sure as we go and get our, um, rates, if we do need to make, um, changes to the health insurance, so they fall under that five percent. Um, again, this year, our rate came under five percent, so we didn't have to make any changes. We could move forward with the same, um, insurance plan we have now and coverage. Um, this year for FY twenty, the, and the employee increase contribu, contribute, contribution, sorry, is at eight percent. So this slide's gonna show you just out of the general fund revenues. Um, fifty-one percent of the revenues we get in the general fund are from property tax. Um, and you'll see that's the biggest increase, um, when you compare nineteen to twenty, um, and that's, that's due to our increase in valuation. A lot of the other revenues are pretty steady. Um, overall, our general fund revenues increased five percent. And then the general fund expenditures, that's broken down also by, um, by department. Police makes up thirty-two percent, fire twenty-eight. Um, and you can see, um, overall, our general fund, um, expenditures increased two point five percent, so. One of the things, I know police looks like they've had that, they have the highest increase of all the other departments. What's in that? It looks like DESCOM increased about sixty-nine thousand of that, which is eleven percent compared to last year. Um, and then we kind of already talked, you know, and when Chief did his presentation, we had the utility is another increase there. But overall, a lot of the other, um, departments have kind of held steady with that slight increase. So this slide's gonna show you, um, you know, we have only thirteen million dollars of revenue coming in the general fund, but our expenditures are twenty million. We make up that difference by the transfers in of seven point three million. And that's made above, um, the loss transfer comes in for the benefits at two point two million. We also transfer about a million dollars for funding about eight police officers and, and equipment at one million. We also, um, the employee benefits and emergency levy, that's taxes that get collected in a different fund, then twice a year I transfer it back into the general fund and that's two point seven million. And then there's miscellaneous administrative transfers that come through sewer, solid waste, road use, um, you know, vehicle maintenance, property maintenance. We kind of went over that at the individual level too. So you can see, um, overall, our revenues coming in over our expenses will increase for FY twenty in the general fund about eleven thousand, which is pretty steady with the prior year budget. The transfer out of general fund, that eight hundred and ten thousand, um, again, hotel motel is required to be put into the general fund, then we transfer it out to a special revenue fund. It's a state requirement, so. So our sewer fund, um, three percent increase is going to be on our sewer user fees and also our stormwater. Um, as of July first, this is due to the increased operating cost and anticipation of, you know, future debt services to comply with the sewer separation. Solid waste fund, um, we don't have any increase scheduled in the fees for July first. It will still be that fourteen twenty-five per month for the thirty-five gallon cart. Um, and Don kind of went over that in his presentation. We, we did have a ten percent increase to the waste management fee, but we're just gonna absorb that in the, in the current, current cost we have right now. This sheet on twenty-one is just kind of giving you an overview of the capital projects. Um, in the budget form, we kind of have it as a, as a different schedule. So this is just like a laundry list of some of the larger CIP projects we're doing. Um, you know, Maslow's the bigger one, street rehab is about two million, the Broadway extension at one point four million and, um, the adaptive signalization on Roosevelt at one point two million. So on, in the hotel motel fund, just to recap, we have eight hundred and ten thousand budgeted for the revenue. Um, we split that seventy percent goes to us, thirty percent goes to the Convention of Visitors Bureau, up to seven hundred thousand. And then after the seven hundred thousand, we get sixty percent and CVB gets forty percent. So this year, we've budgeted expenditures eight hundred and forty-five thousand and thirty-five dollars, which is a little bit more than the revenue we've budgeted. We've, have some reserves that have sat in that fund. You can see here, it's just kind of a laundry list of the things, um, that we kind of pay out of hotel motel. Um, really no big changes. Our parks improvement usually, and everything's going to either the golf course or rec plex. Culture assistance, we did have that tweak of, um, ten thousand's going to the art guild now and five thousand to the Capitol Theater. And then under the special projects, um, you can see we, um, that's where we get, we, we're, the CIP project of the docks and port improvements being funded out of there. And then community field is their utilities, so. And then this is overview of just the sales tax fund, local option sales tax, we have it budgeted at four million twenty thousand. It's a decrease from this year's budget of a hundred and thirty-two thousand. And then the expenses, we have budgeted at four million fifteen thousand one ninety-one. Majority of that money, like we, I said earlier, goes to property tax relief. That two point two million will transfer into the general fund. That police officer equipment and, um, the vehicles and equipment amount is about a million dollars gets transferred back into the general fund also. Um, and you can see a list of the other things that we, um, fund out of the sales tax. And there's just another list, um, nothing really, I mean, a lot of these things we've, that we fund out of the sales fund is pretty consistent from year to year. And on the last slide, it's showing our legal debt margin. Um, according to state law, you can't be over five percent of your assessed value. So, um, we are sitting at this year, we're projected for twenty twenty to be at sixty-two point six seven. Um, our financial policies, um, state will stay under seventy percent, which we've been able to do that now for the last four years, so. Any questions or anything to add?
Just to clarify, the debt limit at sixty-seven million is five percent of our overall hundred percent valuation, which is the most that we could theoretically have geo-bonded. Um, so we're using that forty, forty-two million, so only about two-thirds. We were bumping up against that. Having a four point eight percent increase in valuation, uh, this last year helped tremendously. That's the largest valuation in the last decade.
Mm-hmm.
Largest valuation increase in the last decade. Um, provided a lot of flexibility, but we needed it. Uh, the general fund is very reliant on local option sales tax for support and, uh, that revenue source is, is down quite a bit. We've reduced the amount that we're transferring over from local option sales tax by several hundred thousand, uh, to, in this budget as a, compared to what we have in previous years. And we had to, just revenue wasn't there.
Well, if anybody has any questions, you can let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And number five on the agenda is public hearing, consideration of two thousand nineteen A general obligation loan agreement in a principal amount not to exceed four million nine hundred thousand dollars.
This is a geo-bonding to cover, uh, capital improvement items. Uh, the items that we're funding with that, uh, five hundred thousand is being set aside for the police department demolition. Six hundred and thirty-five thousand-ish for a fire pumper truck. Um, adaptive signalization project, we have four hundred and seventy-three thousand set aside, uh, one point four million for our base, um, street resurfacing program, hundred and fifty thousand is a miscellaneous, which means whatever project might come up that we didn't anticipate having happen during the course of the year, uh, street projects. Um, Broadway extension, uh, out near the, the rec, rec plex, uh, that will wrap around and connect over to West Burlington or West?
West Burlington.
That's us, eight hundred, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars and then a little over six hundred thousand for the airport, the, uh, run, their major runway replacement project, uh, our share of that. Um, those totaled to about four point eight million and the cost of issuance, uh, we'll put this at a four point nine million dollar borrowing amount. I think that res, the resolution in support of that, one of the items that it has in there is, uh, I gotta find what section that's in. The, section two of that has a, um, kind of a pre-le, levy authorization. Uh, we need to levy taxes, uh, in this next year's budget as part of our budget process, what we're collecting in next year's property taxes to cover repayment, uh, on this specific bond issue that we haven't issued yet. Uh, so we have an estimate there, uh, a hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-six for our first year's principal and interest. We may be off a little bit, but whatever that's off is covered essentially by our, our cash balance within the debt service fund. Does that kind of cover it, Stephanie? Uh, we gotta go, we, we will be going through a bond, bond rating call tomorrow, um, with, are we doing that with, do we do Moody's now or S and P? S and P. Um, they will, uh, be using the information that we provide them, uh, which includes our budget, uh, our financial, current financial condition, uh, projections that we have for the next few years, looking at our demographics and what our population, you know, population trends, econ, local economy. Uh, they will, uh, put a, a rating on this bond issue, what's the credit quality of this specific bond issue. We would anticipate it would stay stable with what we've had in the past and.
It was in A last time, wasn't it?
Which, if you were to look through, that's one of the lowest of the tw, town's over twenty thousand population. We're at the, we're still top quality, but, but we are, our rating comes out pretty low on a statewide comparison. And it really has to do with, we have a high debt, debt load per capita basis, but with a low ability to pay from a, uh, individual taxpayer perspective, our incomes are comparatively low. And they look at those demographics and look at us as having a challenged situation. They look at us being in fairly good, sound financial shape in, in terms of, uh, where, where we've set aside funds, but we still have challenges just based on the dynamics of our community. Um, but that rating is used when the, when Piper Jaffrey goes out to sell bonds and people go to bid on those, uh, they will use that rating to determine what kind of interest they're gonna charge us for the, the loan itself. Maybe more than you want, sorry.
Anything else?
Okay.
Any questions?
When do we know that rating?
Uh, so if we have this meeting now, he anticipated within two weeks and when we get the report back, we will forward it on to you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Uh, number six, we have resolution. Number six, we have a resolution approving the final plat of Ozark Estates subdivision.
This is a one-lot subdivision, kind of a unique shape here. It's located behind Burke Cleaners. Essentially, the owner of the property here in this triangular shape is looking to acquire additional property from the adjacent property to the west. So he's subdividing off this irregular shape here to acquire. And then there are a couple outlots that would go to the lots to the north. So for reference, um, just north of Applebee's, uh, this is Burke Cleaners. This home here is acquiring a portion of this lot here in red, just from this point over to the west to expand their lot size. They have a very small lot there, um, this three thousand twenty-seven Fleming Court. So it's just adding, creating one lot and then adding that to that property owner's lot to expand their lot size.
Any questions or concerns?
What's the zoning on that?
Uh, this one's owned, I believe, are four or are three residential. The properties along Roosevelt are C two commercial.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Number six, we have res, seven, we have a resolution approving the final plat of Schneider Edition subdivision.
Similar situation here, this is again, is a one-lot subdivision. Uh, the owner of this lot, um, owned this Lot Seven and Lot Six. He's looking to sell this Lot Seven and combine Lot One with Lot Six to give him some more yard space. So Ariel helps show it a little bit better. So this is the lot that he's subdividing off, and this is the existing home he's adding on to give more of a rear yard. Right now, the home goes pretty close to the rear property line. So this home will have similar lot size to the property to the north. And then this lot here on, uh, Zenobia will have a, a larger rear yard. So again, a one-lot subdivision, not creating a new lot, just the ability to transfer to the adjacent property.
What's your question?
Are we shortening the, what, run that, remind me one more time. He's selling the other house?
He has two houses here.
So he owns twelve oh three Zenobia and four twenty South Marshall?
Yeah.
And he's going to cut the backyard off four twenty South Marshall?
So it's coming in line with this property to the north. So he'll still have forty feet of rear yard behind his house. So it'll still meet our minimum lot size, but it'll allow this lot here on Zenobia to have an actual backyard as well.
But four twenty South Marshall will still meet the minimum lot?
Still meet the minimum, I think it's a hundred and twenty feet deep, our minimum's a hundred feet.
Okay, all right.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Nope. Okay. So number eight, uh, resolution for removal of city-owned turnaround at East End of Hope Street.
The, the property owner has requested that we remove this at this time. They're going to see if they can work out an, an alternative arrangement. We may see this come back at some point in the future.
All right, next we have the proposed consent agenda. Number one is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for two thousand eighteen Public Works Building Roof Replacement Project.
This is a, we were finally coming to a conclusion on our Public Works Building, something that has physically been done from a roof standpoint since probably end of September or October, rather. But we've been chasing some issues. Brockway has, uh, has been pretty good to work with to, to correct some issues that were created with too long of screws in previous building code where conduits were put right below the ceiling level. And so we had a lot of electrical issues that had to be chased down, and we wanted to be corrected. That is actually why you see in the final a deduction of thirteen hundred dollars. That's some of our time that was spent trying to fix the problems. So the total as-built costs is two hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty cents. It was, it's, it's a little bit high, it's about four thousand some higher than what was originally bid. I don't know the exact, I could look back if you had questions on what those change orders were. But we had a budget of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Two hundred and seventy.
Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, thank you. But I can, I can answer those questions on what the change orders were, I didn't bring that with me tonight, but.
Any questions?
They weren't significant.
They, it was, it was pretty minor stuff.
You got a handle on it?
Looks good, thank you. Number two, we have a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Any questions? Number three is a resolution approving amendment, uh, addendum to the Hotel Motel tax agreement between the City of Burlington and the Burlington, West Burlington area, Chamber of Commerce, Greater Burlington Convention, and Visitors Bureau.
Our existing contract identifies the specific number of meetings they will have annually. They have, over the past several years, met eleven months out of the year, I think it's July they take off. They have moved to a, to a scenario now, beginning this year, where they're meeting every other month. And they need to make a change to our contract to reflect that, reflect that those, that the meetings are now every other month instead of eleven times in a year. I don't know why we had that level of specificity in our contract agreement, but given that we do, we need to make an amendment.
Okay, all right, pretty straightforward. Changing the meetings, got it. Any questions?
No.
Concerns, okay. Number four is a resolution amending tree trimmer license fee.
This somewhat coincides with the update in code that we have for the tree service business. We are increasing the yearly tree license fee from fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents to sixty dollars. But there is the ability to reduce that by fifty percent. If an employee or business owner is a member of the International Society of Arboriculture as a certified arborist, they follow a lot of the ANSI standards and test on those. So having that additional knowledge on trees and tree, um, tree cutting and tree services feel that is a important factor. So increasing it two dollars and fifty cents, but would have that ability to reduce it if they have that ISA certified arborist on staff.
That's good to know. Any questions or concerns? All right. Next we have a resolution to install a stop sign for northbound traffic at the intersection of Cherry Street and Fox Street.
Hi, this resolution is a request to install a stop sign at two relatively littlely known streets in town. But there is a picture that gives a pretty good reason as to the reason why my recommendation is to install it. Site distance at this intersection is not very good. Actually, this was an item brought to council a couple of years ago by neighbors in the area. I think Public Works recommended approval of it, but City Council at that time did not approve installing the stop sign. At this point, I think, I, it doesn't have a lot of traffic volume to warrant it, but site distance is definitely an issue. It's a stop sign, it, it wouldn't cause that much of a traffic issue, I think we should install it.
Staff recommends yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, we have a resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for hire license for Dennis Charles Maines doing business as Yellow Cab Transportation LLC. Do we have any, uh, anything to add or?
No.
If you don't have anything to add?
No.
I looked over it and, and there's some things in the city code that I wasn't aware of. Every six months, they have to provide that, provide the certification and inspection of their vehicles. We used to do it in the past, uh, but we don't do that anymore. They're required to supply me with the certification. So I kind of ironed that out with both them, and you'll see the, the other taxi service here in town's application probably on the next, uh, work session agenda. So this is just one of the two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Number seven is a, the public hearings previously scheduled. A is a consideration of an application for state revolving fund loan for the combined sewer separation throughout Locust Basin. March eighteenth, is March eighteenth.
Correct.
And then B is a consideration of a sewer revenue loan agreement in a principal amount not to exceed six million five hundred thousand, also for March eighteenth, twenty nineteen.
Yeah, and that's a refinancing that we talked about at the previous meeting.
All right, very good. Next, we're on to our discussion items. Number one, we have the Treasurers Report.
Hi, so in your packet was January's Treasurers Report. Anything that stands out, let me look and see if I think there's anything. Most of the, um, there's a couple of things that have deficit balances, and that's timing or seasonal, like the Recplex and the golf course, because we still have expenses even though there're not a lot going on out there. And some of the other things are just the timing of transfers that we do to fund capital projects. And then if you look at the revenue and expenditure summaries, there's really nothing in the revenues that stands out. We're kind of right on track. And in the expenditures, the only things that are like higher than what we would average out of per month is like insurance. And that's because we're, we just paid half of our insurance in January, and we're going to be paying the other half. So those expenses are always higher at this time of year when we're paying the full premium for the year. Other than that, the sewer main line repairs is just various projects that have been going on in there and then, that we have to do, so. So if anybody has any questions?
The only question I had was solid waste management, so a fund change in, um, forty, a hundred and forty-five thousand. Was that the fees associated with trash or landfill fees?
They're pretty, the landfill fees are pretty consistent from month to month.
The hundred and forty-five thousand, that's, this is what I asked you about. It's the, we have a six hundred thousand encumbrance that's shown in there.
Oh, so yeah, and Julie's been on, Julie's been on vacation, so I haven't been able to ask her. She put, so we've set up annual purchase orders at the beginning of the year for things that are going to be reoccurring every month, and normally expenses go across that, against that, to reduce that encumbrance. And there is an additional encumbrance right now that I have, I need to talk to her to find out if it's a double up of another one.
That was the only thing that stood out to me
Okay.
versus previous finances.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, number two.
One thing I'd, I hate that, um, up at the top of that, the, just because I had said, I said a number, I talked about two and a half million dollars for TIF. We have the consolidated TIF, we run about two and a half, two point four to two point five million. I think last year it might have been two million three, two hundred and fifty thousand, it ran through there. There are three separate TIF rebate agreements below that, Grogator Burlington, Wine Guard, and Burlington Crossing. Stephanie put a number up that showed the total TIF revenues up at two point nine million. And she's including those separate TIF rebate agreements over and above. We, when I, when I'm tracking TIF debt, I'm tracking what we run through our main TIF account. We have those separate agreements that whatever gets collected gets rebated back, or a percentage gets rebated back, in the case like the Wine Guard one, I think it's seventy-five percent goes to them. So just wanted to make note of that, that there is a little bit of a clarification on what I said with TIF.
Very good. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
No other questions for me.
All right, number two, we have a request from Burlington Riverfront Entertainment for modification for facility rental charges.
Good evening to everyone. Did you guys all have a copy of what we're proposing? The main reason we're looking at this is, so David spent quite a bit-
You need to introduce yourself.
Mike Woneal, Executive Director of Burlington Riverfront Entertainment.
David Kroll, Assistant Director.
Sorry.
Thank you.
So the main prob, uh, reason we're looking at doing this is, we had David do, um, looking around town, southeast Iowa, at other venues that were having the same kind of events that we were having from weddings, parties, and stuff like that. We were extremely lower than all of them. Some of it, like the arena cost, uh, you know, we, we just installed the new LED screens. John was there last night, saw them. We've done some updating to the building. I feel like we're offering more to the clients now, which in turn, I think, makes the, the venue a more appeasing place to be. So it, it should, it should have a, a little bit higher price level than what, than what it previous was. And some of the other ones, it just, they're really cheap. And it's, uh, by the time we're cleaning it, setting it up, and everything else, it's, there's not a whole lot left in making any money on there for, for you as the city, as well as us. And so it's like, we just wanted to kind of come in line more with other venues in the area, and that's kind of why we're looking at, at doing this.
And these prices will, the, uh, they won't affect the legacy of that, so those will stay the same.
So you don't think it's going to have a, a major impact on the, the, the events you booked then?
I don't think so.
You're pretty confident?
Yeah. And the, from our board, it's like, you know, like, we're looking at the fifteen hundred dollars for the arena. That's just more, that is like top end, doesn't mean that we have to charge that. You know, David and I, when we, when we looked at this, we were looking more around the thirteen hundred dollars, but this would put us at that fifteen hundred dollars that if we wanted to go up that high, that we wouldn't have to come back and do this all again and
Sure.
and everything, so. This would kind of be just more of the max type prices that we were looking at. But the, the services that we're providing there, where you are doing a full bar, we're doing all the setup, all the chair setup and everything for these events. We're trying to give the custom more, customer more than what they've gotten in the past. And we just feel that the, the prices should, should show that a little bit more. I mean, we're, some of the other venues around town are three, three to five thousand dollars to do the exact same thing that we're doing.
Yeah, well, when we're losing money, we should be the cheapest one, so appreciate it.
Yeah.
So as far as that goes, because it's currently, um, well, there was, you know, three classes originally.
Those look like they're eliminated here.
Yeah. And I know, and I know-
No, they're, they're further down the page.
They're on there still.
Well-
And we can still, like I said, this, just because we set these at this rate- if somebody comes in, if the, if, if it's a nonprofit comes in, this gives us a little bit more freedom that we can still discount to some of these other events. It just, it gives us that able, the, the, the ability to, to make more money on places where we should be.
Yeah, I just didn't want, um, to deter other people, you know, from-
Oh, absolutely, and we don't either. We don't want to drive business away, we don't want to scare, we want it, it's just, um-
Well, it would make sense to raise, raise rates, especially with all the, you know, improvements and all the hard work you guys put into it, and each event, you put a lot of hard work into it.
And the improvements to the riverfront, I mean, it's a beautiful, it's more beautiful than it's ever been.
Absolutely.
We feel like there's added value to that as well.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, no? And, um, any other questions?
No, I don't have any.
I do, I do have concern with regard to, um, not having language in here that specifically outlines expenses for nonprofits. So if, if, for example, the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, I understand that you could, you'll work with them when they-
But you're a legacy event, so that doesn't change.
Okay. But what, what if they decided they wanted to have another event on the riverfront? Would that be classified in the same, as a legacy event as well, or not?
I would-
Charge them the same?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't know that it's the event, it's that you're a legacy group. It's just like civic music, they come to us every year with a different concert. Their price stays, I mean, it goes up very minimal, so I-
I still feel like there needs to be language in there, specifically outlining what the, what a nonprofit would be expected to pay. I mean, let's say the Lions Club wants to come and put an event on at the port. Are, are they going to have to pay more because they're not a legacy group? I mean, that's my point, is, um, kind of picking maybe winners and losers.
Well, and I mean, that language was set forth with us before, with, from the city before. So it was just like, where, where do we, I mean-
But the previous, the previous, um, agreement outlines, I mean, there's a significant, um, rebate for nonprofits, and it just outlines nonprofits as a group. So I, I think I'd like to see that language in this agreement as well, more, more easily defined, I guess. And does anybody else agree with that, or no?
I, I really don't have a concern at, at this point, but that's my opinion, so.
I like it that we're, we're looking at more competitive rates. And I feel that you guys are the experts on this. When you're talking with someone, you can get a feel for where you need to steer them price-wise. So I'm okay with it, Matt. I don't think that they're out to, to gouge anybody, I think they're fair and honest with people.
But if they're not standing here in three years, maybe somebody else is, so that's why I think having that definition in there is a good idea.
Stephanie, I have a question on how this works. I don't know if you can answer it. If we're charging with a, with the way their charging structure is being proposed, if it was our structure that- with a, with the way their charging structure is being proposed, if it was our structure that was that way, could we, would we have the flexibility to just provide a discount without having a written policy that said how we were doing it? So it, for example, for the, when, what Matt's suggesting, if Lions comes in and we wanna charge them less than what the, the stated rate is, would we have the flexibility to just do that?
Aren't they a class one?
But you're doing away with the class one if you go to this schedule that you have.
You're limiting the classes. You're just, you're, you're going to basically one schedule. And there's no defined rate for any given entity. And that's my concern is, so if you give the break to, does that mean all nonprofits get the same break? You know, if Shop With A Cop wants to have an event there, did we get the same break as everybody else? And that's my point is it's not defined in the, in the, so then you're opening yourself up for, well, you give a break to them, we get the same break. That's my point. You know, the Marines or the, uh, political group that's a nonprofit wants to have an event there that raises money, do they get the same break as the Kiwanis?
I'm, accounting staff, what are you telling me? What, what would we be allowed to do? You need to come up and talk. Someone needs to come up and be able to tell me and be able to speak. You don't have any answer to that. And then I think that legally, we need to know if they're operating on our behalf by our rate structure, if they can have more flexibility than what we can. 'Cause that, that's part of what makes me a little uncomfortable. And it's part of like even when you're doing a, the teaser rates at the beginning or the end of the year. It has to be, I mean, any rates that we set have to be by resolution. So we have, we don't have the flexibility to just say we wanna offer this right now. We have to, we have to set that policy up in advance and, knowing, knowing what, what we can do, this, that's where I'm nervous with the, what you're presenting. But not, not the idea that we can ch, change, but how much flexibility can we provide with it?
Well, so, so your suggestion would be for them to have a class, a nonprofit class rate and a, a regular rate?
Well- It would make me feel more comfortable, but I wanna check, I wanna know whether we legally have the ability to have something like that, that happen to say that we're, without having an established rate that we're going to-
Well, would you guys, would you guys be willing to look at doing that, putting that in writing with the?
Yeah, I don't have a problem going back. Uh, we were just, before we had three different classes and it, it did get
Right.
confusing with customers on, well, we're this and we're that and how do I fall into this and why don't I fall into that? And it, it, when you, when we have so many different classes,
Sure.
it does make things a little, a little muddier when we're booking something. I mean, if, if we need to do a, uh, if you're a legitimate nonprofit thing, we can do a, a column for that.
And I understand. And when you make a comparison to a private entity, whether it's like the barn on the ridge or, or comfort suites or something like that, I mean, those are private entities that are typically for profit. Um, it's a public building, so the rules are a little bit different. And that's why I wanna make sure that they're defined as well as I think.
Sure. But that being said, I also don't wanna be so cheap. We're taking businesses away from those private entities.
I, I don't either.
So I, you know, i- if that's what it sounds like, you guys, if, if we'd be happy if they came up with a, give them time to come up with a proposed rate for the nonprofits, uh, then, then it sounds like we would be okay.
And I kinda wanna know, I think we just need to have some level of discussion, what we keep, how much flexibility there can be built into it and make sure that we have some talk with you.
Sure.
Yeah.
I understand where you're coming from. I used to work at the college and you could carry on a half an hour, forty-five minute conversation of why they're a nonprofit and why they get a price break. And, and it's, it's, I, I, I feel your pain with that.
One thing I will say is this is a step in the right direction.
Yep.
Thanks for bringing it forward.
So we're gonna get the information and contact them then?
We're gonna have to work with them and, and we'll, we'll see what we can do to have it come back as a, an established-
Yeah. Right, 'cause we'll have to, we'll have to, you know, pass it as a resolution anyway. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let us know what we need to do.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Alright. Number three, we have downtown parking.
Just wanted to give a brief update on kind of where we're at, uh, with some of the, um, changes and modifications we've made, uh, that have gone through council over the past, uh, couple of years. I've had a couple of updates in the past, uh, so just, uh, some of this is overview and then, uh, we'll hit on some of the key points as well. Again, the parking study was accepted by city council June sixth, twenty sixteen. Uh, this forms a parking committee that, uh, continues to meet to bring forward parking improvement solutions for consideration and implementation by the city council. Uh, it involved quite a bit of public input, uh, during the process of developing the plan, uh, prepared by Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission, uh, looking at, uh, evaluating existing conditions, comparison to other communities and improvement options. Some of the considerations with the plan was managing the existing resources efficiently, uh, maintaining balance of, uh, resident employee and visitor needs in parking downtown. Looking at future and planned developments, uh, parking lot maintenance cost, uh, parking enforcement, how that's handled and how it can be efficiently, uh, maintained. Um, one of the quotes in the purpose of the plan was no solution will please, appease all parties. Uh, so we realized that, uh, we're trying to bring forward options for the council to consider that. Try and, uh, make, I guess, from our perspective or from others' perspective, uh, make positive improvements to parking, realizing it may impact some negatively, may impact some positively, and continue to evaluate the plan and, uh, continue to bring forward options. So some of the completed i, items, uh, especially in the past, uh, year or so, uh, two hundred block of Jefferson, additional parking, uh, Main and Valley, additional spaces in the parking lot, uh, six in Washington, improved parking lot. Uh, the parking lot identification signs are, uh, just over a year old. They were started in December of twenty eighteen, finished in early twenty nineteen. And then, uh, the two additional parking lots, six in Washington, Main and Valley, those signs were added upon, uh, the, the completion of those lots. Uh, we do have a parking, uh, webpage on our city website and, uh, parking lots, uh, which takes some time to do or if you go to Google Maps, they're now identified on Google Maps, uh, the public parking lots. Again, the parking lot signage that were added to all the lots, uh, is this, uh, sign here showing on the right, except for the riverfront lots, the seventh and Valley lot and the lot behind Lindo, Mexico, those are identified as free lots, forty-eight hour limit, and having the corresponding signs, uh, to those. This is an example of, or an image of the parking webpage, uh, on the city's website, something that, um, we need to continue to evaluate and update as, uh, changes are made. Um, we are going through a, a website upgrade. Uh, hopefully this'll be a page that we'll have to continue to evaluate and make sure it's useful and, uh, efficient and the information presented. A couple of other completed items, updated the le, lot lease structure and rate, uh, the twenty-four hour, uh, lease rate and then the seven thirty to five. And then attempt to free up some of these spaces, uh, particularly for weekend and evening events in the downtown, uh, that continue to grow. And, um, trying to make use of the parking lots, especially overnight when they're, um, mostly have sat empty through the evaluation process. Updated the construction parking permit process to, um, have some fees with that, uh, and a little more uniform enforcement and then installed bike racks throughout downtown. Some of the upcoming and ongoing items, um, parking lot directional signage, uh, those were, uh, should be installed, uh, here spring twenty nineteen, maybe over the next couple of months. Um, and I'll show an image of that. That kind of completes the parking, uh, lot signage for the downtown, but is also a key component to make sure visitors and residents know where the parking lots are downtown. Looking at, uh, creating a parking lot flyer for downtown businesses, highlighting what the parking options are in the downtown, making sure uh, businesses are aware for their employees and for their visitors and trying to promote that, uh, downtown parking information a little bit better uh, on our website or Facebook and through this flyer. One thing we've talked about through our committee is reevaluating and updating the public parking counts, uh, through the plan or study that was completed, uh, three years ago. Uh, coming up on three years ago, there were some parking counts, uh, included in that. And kind of going back and revisiting those, see if, uh, some parking patterns have changed, uh, parking, uh, lots and non-street parking, how those, uh, uses and patterns have changed over that three-year period and, uh, help, help us have another tool to see, uh, what solutions may be needed to be brought forward, uh, going forward. And then the fifth and Valley parking lot, uh, improvement, something, uh, we've talked about with, uh, uh, new developments going in on Valley Street, um, uh, that's out there as a, a potential project here, potentially this year, uh, or in the future as well. So this is the parking lot, uh, directional signage, um, as, uh, identified, uh, in the plan and, um, through kind of a walking survey, uh, located at key points in the downtown to get people to the public parking lots. Um, those were recently purchased and again, will be installed through, uh, Public Works Department over the next couple of months. Uh, but that'll, uh, hopefully, uh, enable people to better realize, uh, there are parking lots. They're not always on Jefferson, uh, they're just off Jefferson. So uh, they might be only a block away from where they're looking to go, but there are options there and, uh, just making them better aware, uh, for residents, visitors and employees. Some of the future projects impacts, uh, that'll impact, uh, parking in the downtown, Valley Street residential, uh, commercial developments. Uh, looking at eighty to a hundred new residential units with first floor commercial on, uh, in the four hundred block and five hundred block of Valley Street. Uh, that'll create a lot of additional parking needs. Um, part of that through, uh, the potential fifth and Valley parking lot and maybe some of our other existing uh, public parking lots, having, uh, leases at those, uh, locations. The Tampa building site redevelopment, uh, when this study was, uh, being done in twenty sixteen, that was kind of a future project that, uh, would impact, uh, downtown quite a bit. Um, unfortunately in the state, it's in now, but, uh, looking at, uh, what potentially could happen there in the future could have another, uh, could have an impact as well. And then the Tiger Grant project, uh, which will affect Main Street, Jefferson Street and Riverfront, uh, as far as, uh, reconstruction, uh, potentially have some ability to do some different things with parking at those, uh, locations as well. Um, Main Street potentially four to three lane, uh, looking at what some parking options are. So uh, there are projects that will have impact on future, uh, parking needs and, uh, availability as well. So the parking committee continues to evaluate parking solutions identified in the parking study. Uh, within the study, there were nineteen near-term, fifteen intermediate and thirteen long-term solutions. Uh, we've hit on, uh, quite a few of those through the, um, completed items, but there's still quite a few that, uh, we continue to evaluate. Uh, one of those on-street hourly parking, currently have two-hour parking on Jefferson and then four-hour parking off of Jefferson. Uh, existing public parking lot usage and function, um, looking at what our leases are, our, um, occupancy of the parking lots and then use of those parking lots through a, a, a parking count. Uh, riverfront parking usage and function, um, with the Tiger Grant, with our great places, uh, with the auditorium functions there, what is the, the best use and function of the riverfront parking? Uh, residential development parking needs, um, over the next couple of years, as, as I mentioned, eighty to a hundred new potential downtown residential units, uh, will have a big impact on parking. Um, so as we look at parking needs, uh, today, uh, and we looked at it three years ago, those are never static. Those needs continue to change, uh, as new developments occur, as, uh, re, new residents come downtown, as new businesses open in different areas of the downtown. So uh, it's something we continue to evaluate, um, based on those changes. So that's kind of a real brief overview of what we've done, uh, something that we're, is not a static thing. There's no one right option, I think, from, uh, identified in the parking study and from our committee that we've brought forward, but we continue to evaluate and bring forward options uh, for parking needs. Uh, the public parking lots are still within the last year fully signed and, uh, not even fully signed in the aspect that we're just now gonna be getting up the directional signs to those. So trying to evaluate, uh, I guess, how well those are functioning or not functioning is, is still kind of up in the air, but, um, something we continue to look at and I'll continue to bring forward parking solutions. Has kind of fallen off the radar the last few months. Charlie was the lead of this committee. Uh, so we've only met a couple of times in the last few months, but as we get new staff on board, that'll be, certainly be one of our key items.
The end of May.
End of May.
Could you, could you go back, give that link again? That, I was busy writing it down. There you go. Thank you.
Yep.
I had a question. So you said there's nineteen near-term solutions, fifteen intermediate and thirteen long-term. Are those printed anywhere? We could look at them?
Yeah, um, actually, go to the city's website. If I can get to home here. So from the city's, uh, main page, um, under city government, our trying to function through here, community plans and studies. Uh, this is a list of, uh, quite a few of our, uh, current plans and studies. So the downtown parking study is here, third one down. If you click on that, um, solutions are towards the end of the, um, book. Uh, intermediate solutions are on page one oh seven, long-term on one nineteen and near-term, uh, on page ninety-four. So towards the back of that, it's a large file, so it takes a while to open, but, uh, those are all within, uh, that, uh, thing. Under see and do, if you go to downtown parking, um, that's where the page is located. Uh, I think admittedly needs some updates, but does show, uh, a map of the downtown parking, um, some of the hourly and mixed-use parking options to let people know a little bit more about, uh, what those colors mean and what the options are, uh, and then, uh, who to contact if you wanna lease a space. So uh, that stuff is on our website. Uh, we do try and get information out, but then how do you get information out to residents to know where to go to get that information is kind of another step. So there's, uh, something that is definitely a focus on our committee is getting those brochures out to businesses downtown and residents to make them more aware of where the resources are to find.
Do you have an idea how well-used your hourly parking, parking lots are? The ones that you pay by the hour?
I don't. I don't know. Yeah.
I mean, we have the overall collection, but I, I don't know that we've taken asset of, of the amount of vehicles in the parking lot on a, over a week's time or anything.
I just wonder how well they've been used and whether that's, is, as those discussions have gone on, I just wonder how well, whether that's a spot where does it even make sense to do the hourly parking? Is it, does it serve a, a viable need or su, or not?
Maybe that's something we can at least see what the total collections are over time and see how those have fluctuated or not fluctuated. Probably be able to deduce down kind of what the use is, but it's tough with our pay boxes, our antiquated pay boxes to actually get counts and-
Yeah, I just kind of wondered the value of that or whether that's something that we shouldn't be considering those just being frees, free if they're not reserved on a permanent basis. But I don't know. It's-
Something we can certainly have discussion on. And then the discussion of if you're offering free, is there someone who wanna, gonna wanna have a lease right next door to it, long-term and, and then balancing our cost to maintain parking lots and our parking enforcement versus having the ability to have free-
And as you mentioned that, one of the problems that we've run into, um, as a system, when we switch to, from the two-hour, the, I think it's one hour in Jefferson and two hours on the other streets to two hours on Jefferson and four hours on the other streets. Our collections on fines for on-street parking went from thirty, I'm, I'm just gonna go off the top of my head, like thirty-three thousand down to more like in the twenty-some thousand range. And our lease, leases have done okay, but part of that is just the way we've had scheduled rate increases on, on leases. Overall though, our parking revenue is down. And it's not covering the cost to run a parking program. As we move forward, if there isn't something that's, it, that changes with that, that's gonna become a general fund cost that will impact our service in other areas if we're gonna have-
Especially a year like this, where you have so much snow removal.
Yeah.
Need to be done.
So last year, Charlie, myself, Matt Ammonow and Nick maybe, did you go to Davenport with us? We went up there and then we spent the morning talking to them about nuisance, but then we spent the afternoon talking to them about their parking program and some things that they had done. And they were much like us, where everything was free and they had open parking and they tried to have these designated lots. And they went away from that and they created, um, electronic charging stations where people would pull into a lot and then they'd go pay fifty cents or a dollar or whatever it was and get a ticket and put it in their car. Um, and they would buy so much time based off of how much they, they would spend. And then, um, the parking meter person could come up to these things and it would tell them if anybody had expired that hadn't checked out or, or whatever. Last time I talked to Charlie, before he left, he was going to do some research and determine, you know, whether or not that was feasible and talk about some things like costs. This is going back to early spring last year. Um, did we ever get those done? Did we ever look into that? Did we ever get those done? Did we ever look into that because?
Electronic ticket.
The feedback we got from them was, A, they were able to make their park, parking program significantly more efficient. That the feedback they got from the people that were using the lots was actually more positive. Because when it was free, people would just park everywhere, that, it was a nightmare. He said they had fights about who would pull in and people being parked too long. Where this new program had actually made it a lot easier for people, for the users. And then also, he said that the income that they got, they were able to provide much better services, more parking lots. And, and their service was better. Is this, are we looking at this the wrong way instead of saying, hey, we should just make it free for everybody and then eat the costs? Should we be looking at it and saying, well, perhaps maybe we should make some investment in this and, and try to provide a better service when it comes to this? We have a lot of people that come in and say, listen, we need more parking. Well, we can't afford more parking. But if you paid maybe a dollar for a parking spot for four hours, maybe we could afford more parking.
I, I don't know where Charlie left out on that. I didn't do any investigation.
After we first developed the committee, that was one thing we looked at was electronic ticketing through the police department and then electronic pay boxes. And I think we had some money presented at budget time that were eliminated pretty quickly at that time, but I'd have to go back and see what those were. But that was kind of something that we looked at was what, what's the cost of those electronic pay boxes that could be used whether it's on-street or in parking lots?
The, the other thing I want to say is, most of the feedback I've gotten has been very positive about our parking program. I know there's some people that aren't as happy about it. But one thing I will say that has been fairly consistent, especially the people that I talked to that work on the, towards Main Street. The four-hour parking on Main Street is very problematic, especially for some of the small businesses. A lot of the feedback I've gotten has suggested that some of the larger businesses like Two Rivers Employees or some of the other bank employees are parking there long-term and not moving their vehicles. And it's disrupting their ability to, to have customers stop there and use their facilities or, or they'll, they'll park there at eight in the morning and then they'll leave at noon for lunch. And then they'll come back and park there again until they go home. Does it make sense to maybe reevaluate the timing allowance there just on the Main Street area?
That, that's one of the items that's in the plan and we're looking at, and we've heard that on Fourth Street here, between Main and Washington and Jefferson. And there's a lot of small businesses there that people, whether it's employees or residents or whatever.
I mean, two hours maybe isn't long enough, but three hours would at least break it up to a point where somebody, they're not going to have the ability to come move their vehicle consistently. So they park in a more appropriate spot.
Something to look at as a committee.
From a PD's perspective, what have you heard from parking enforcement in regards to the four-hour parking and how that has impacted?
Well, basically she, the cars don't move a lot on, on the north-south streets, which is the four-hour parking. People will come and park there and stay for four hours, then they'll leave for lunch and come back and park on those, those north-south streets. Mainly Jefferson Street is probably where most of the violations come from. Occasionally, the enforcement on those north-south streets happens. But when she went from the, and I believe it all used to be two-hour downtown. And the vehicles would seem to move more and, and allow more of that storefront traffic to get in there and park. So when they moved to the four hours, that's what we would find is people coming out of the lots and parking on the streets. And they would probably move some of those back to a lease program in the lots or, or.
Well, I think.
Make those arrangements for parking instead of parking on those north-south corridors.
Two hours may not have been long enough. I mean, I know I had clients that would be in my office for more than two hours and worry about parking, but I think four hours is maybe too much. Just be, for the reason that you're suggesting or talking about right now.
Yeah, and it, because they would park there and then they'll stay parked there until they go to lunch at noon, then leave the block and then come back at one.
Yeah.
And, and her hours are, are twenty-eight hours a week is what she works for parking enforcement. And so then they can kind of gauge and there's one day in the week that she's off and they try to hit that schedule too. So there's a whole host of things that are going on there.
Yeah, that's been going on for years. Thankfully, our downtown though is no longer just Jefferson Street. So I, I, if anything, I would be in favor of changing that to a shorter window, to either two or three. Because, and, and the only thing I have a problem with on the, that any kind of metering or ticket type, not like getting a ticket. Is I, you know, the times that I was a merchant, you know, every time we started talking about having to have a, a parking meter. Then the merchants would just think up, you know, would just rise up because it's another deterrent for not shopping downtown.
I don't, and I agree with you, I don't necessarily want to do that or I don't think that that necessarily be as appropriate for a lot of the street parking as much as I would say that it'd be appropriate for parking lots.
Maybe, maybe the lots, yeah, but not on the street. If on the street, if anything, it's too long and slow.
I had an office downtown, I know you've worked downtown.
Yep.
Linda, I know you've worked downtown. So I mean, two hours sometimes gets tight. I think maybe that more sweet spot's probably that three hours. So people are constantly moving and they can't do the, what Chief's talking about, park and wait for.
They'll figure out a way around it, trust me.
Always figure out a way.
I'm sure they will, but I, I would.
But I would be, I would be willing to take a look at that.
So what day is she off? I'm just kidding.
It varies.
And for the record, five thousand dollars in those citation decreases have got to be mine, so.
Do you have some pass-through bills?
No, I paid them all. I paid them all. Go get them, chief.
All right, thank you. Any other additions?
Eric here.
What's that?
I mentioned to Eric that we were having this conversation, he brought it up before, so I didn't know if he had any comments or anything.
Sure, would you like to?
Yeah, I'd love to. So first thing is.
Could you just?
Thanks Eric for letting me know this was going to be on the agenda, I really appreciate that. Eric Renteria, five twenty-one Northwood. The, a couple of comments. One is that, is we're fourteen months into the parking sign program and by the time it gets implemented, it's going to be summertime. So I'm stunned that, that it takes eighteen months to get signs up. But, but that being said, the, the, the signs are, and I don't know what your thoughts are. The first question I ask is, is it working? And the answer, I think, is no. The, the challenge is that, is that you can't get people to use the lots. And I do think that the three-hour change, the three-hours on the streets is a great idea. The same principle applies to the parking lots. Instead of trying to come up with a fancy way to charge people money for being in the, in the parking lot, apply the same principle they use on the streets to the parking lot. Put a three-hour limit in there so that, so that the cars move. Because you want them to be able to park, but you don't want them to park there all day. And it addresses that problem of people camping out in the, in the parking lots.
But we do need to have some.
We've got, we've got downtown, you've got downtown residents.
There's a solution for that.
But you also have people who work and have eight-hour workdays.
There's a solution for that as well. And, and, and it comes down to, this has to be really simple, okay? You can either park there or you can't, okay? Right now, I, I have people coming to the store all the time and they say, I don't, I don't know if I, I can park in that lot. I read the sign and then I get in the parking lot and I'm trying to read the little sign. By the time I read the little sign, I've forgotten what the big sign said. And then there's print on there that tells me, but I, it's so small, I can't read it. So, so the, the first thing is, is what we're doing working? The answer, I think, is, is no. So, but imagine if, if you have to address, if you take each case by case. So you have the downtown worker, okay? And I know that this is going to be, you talk about not being able to satisfy everybody. This is my not being able to satisfy everyone story. And that is that, is that what, what I would propose is a hanger tag or a sticker for people who have to park longer downtown. However, it doesn't give you a specific parking spot. It gives you the ability to park in any spot that's open downtown. All the spots become three-hour parking. But if you have the tag, you can park in any spot downtown in the lots for eight hours. Okay, that way, people who are coming down to shop, they can, if the space is open, they can park in it. It, it's that simple, okay? And if you work downtown, when you come downtown, if the space is open, you can park in it, okay? And with the little tag, you can stay there all day so you can work. It makes it real simple. You, you can either park there or you cannot, okay? And the only reason that you would not be able to park there is if that parking spot is taken, okay? So if there's an open spot, park there. If you have the tag, you can stay for eight hours. If you don't, you can stay for three, okay? One of the things that came out of the parking study was that there's ample parking spaces and we've talked about this. The problem is you can't park in any of them. And the ones you can in, can park in, there's a perception that you cannot, okay? So if you have this system that allows you to park in any parking space that's open and you take what you do on the street, which is three-hour parking and put that in the lots. Then hopefully you'll also reduce some of the people that are parking on the side streets and get them in the lots. The lots are empty. Most of the time when you drive by, the lots are empty, okay? And it's because people, people don't, like me, I go downtown every day. I know how to park downtown. I will tell you that the last time I parked in the ramp over by the Circle K, I had to look very carefully to make sure that I was parking in the right spot because I wasn't sure. And I'm down here, I know more about parking than anybody downtown. So it, it doesn't, what we have is not working. But it's real simple, three hours. You get three hours in the lot just like you get three hours in the street. You can park there or you can't. And the only reason you can't is if another vehicle is already parked there. So when people come down, there's an open space, they can park there. And it's all, all the lots are just three-hour parking. And if you need longer parking, and this is where the lack of appeasement is, you're not going to have a specific space. But I will tell you that people that come down and work eight hours a day downtown, they're down there before the lots and the streets are full. Because I go down there, I go down and work in the mornings before anything's open and all the lots, all the spaces are empty. It's not, it's not an issue. This is a real simple fix. It doesn't involve buying massive amounts of equipment. It doesn't involve charging people. It doesn't involve, and it doesn't detract from the revenue that the city gets because people still buy the hanger passes so that they can park eight hours downtown. So that, that revenue is unaffected by this. But it makes it so simple. You can park if the space is open in any space downtown. That's it. You know, I've, I've been studying this now for, well, I went to the meetings in two thousand sixteen. And, and since two thousand sixteen, not, not one thing. The only thing that's changed is, is the one-hour and two-hour parking changing to the two-hour, four-hour parking. That is it. That is the only change. That's it. The signs haven't changed anything. It hasn't, hasn't changed anything. The same challenges of parking, and, and this is a, a really simple. I, I will tell you that I'd rather have the fourteen million dollar solution of building two parking ramps, tearing out Seventh Street and putting, putting in a parking ramp. You know, it's a great idea. I, I don't think that you guys have the.
We, we do, we, we, we understand, you know, where you're coming from. And I, I just want to kind of not get to a point kind of thing. It just, we'll stay on track, we, you know, I, I don't mean to, you know, totally cut you off.
No, I, I get it completely.
So I understand then what you're saying is what you would like to see would be a three-hour.
All right, do, do you?
Everywhere and then in the parking lots would be tagged, you know, if you had a tag, you could park in the parking lot, in the.
Longer.
In the parking lots longer. That's, that's the basic.
Any feedback on that idea?
Can we comment? Because it was on the agenda. Oh, Eric, I think you have some great ideas. I think you're, you're thinking outside the box and I really, really like that. I do have some concerns without studying it further about the tag system being transferable or I would just have to, you know, explore that more and allow the Parking Committee to explore it more. And do you serve on the Parking Committee?
I do not. The, so I, but I can address your, I can address your question.
Okay.
You know, the, if you do a sticker, then it's vehicle-specific, which people are not going to like.
Transfer it that way.
If you do the tag, then you can put it in whatever vehicle that you want to take downtown. So if, like, if my wife drives her car, she can put the tag in there. I like that better. But, you know, that, those are just options. You can make it vehicle-specific if you like.
I like the vehicle-specific because we issued tags for the senior center and as you would imagine, over time, they disappear and would need more tags and more tags.
Or they forget their tag and then they want you to leave it.
That would be good. The only question I would have is from an enforcement standpoint. You start, now we're going to add enforcement to every parking space downtown. We have one enforcement officer who, you know, needs to check them every three hours. That's a lot of spaces for one officer to check. I'm not saying it's not feasible. I actually, seeing or listening to it and I really like the idea, just think there's a couple more finite details that would need to be worked out.
I can address that issue as well. The, the Parking Enforcement Officer has responsibility for working those parking lots now. And she has to check to see if there's any money in the drawer, which is a challenging process. Having been ticketed once with my money in the, in, in the yellow box. I can tell you that, that that's a, that's a horrible, challenging process. And the only solution to it is to, is to go to court. As crazy as it is, you can't just say, hey, I have a problem, can we talk about it and fix it because something's wrong here? You go to court and you go in front of the judge and you say, Judge, we have a problem. She says, hey, I, I can't fix it, that's not my job, guilty or innocent. And it's like, no, look, I didn't come here for guilty or innocent, I came here because there's a problem and we need to fix it. And I, and I'm in court. And it's like, it's like, all right, you are not the person who can solve this. That we, we, the, the, even the correction process that we have for parking tickets is messed up. Because if you get a ticket that you shouldn't get, you go in front of a judge who can't solve the problem, which is crazy. But I know that because I did it. I spent the money to go to court, to fight the ticket. I went with the officer down, we opened up the yellow box, went through the whole process, went back to the judge. She said, I don't care. This is, this is, it's like, it's important to me, I don't care if you care or not. But that's a whole nother story. The, the issue is that, is that she's already working those boxes. And she already has responsibility for patrolling those, those, those lots. If anything, this makes it easier for her because all she has to do is chalk the tires just like she does on the street.
Yeah, I.
And I would ask the chief if he agrees with that. Maybe I, maybe I have it wrong.
I, my, my fear would be, you know, first of all, I shop eighty percent downtown. Parking your, whenever I shop at your place, I park right in front of it. I haven't had any parking problems downtown and I haven't had for, for a long time. I understand the signs because I went and read them once and I remember what they are. My only problem with your, is your plan, as we discussed before, is we do have overnight residents that if that parking lot's full, close to their apartment. Because all of a sudden now we're driving everybody to that spot and they don't have a leased spot. My son, when he had an apartment down here, he had a half hour for lunch, he had to get home, let his dog out, get something to eat and get back. He doesn't have time to look for it. And so if we drive everybody to the parking lots and we're wildly successful, it's, oh, he still is going to need a leased spot. Because he's a downtown resident and he's got to have a place to park where he's not going to get penalized. And he wants to have a place to park, just like when you own a residence at home, you can lease a spot in your driveway to stay there. So I, I'm all for it, but I'm not, I'm not in favor of eliminating leased spots.
So I can, I can address, address that, that issue. So first of all, if the, if the parking lots are better utilized, there will be more on-street parking available for people who need to run downtown and, and.
But then he takes a spot from a merchant, Eric, and, and merchants will be griping about that.
I think we could, we could continue to talk and discuss and, and I, I do believe that you, you, it sounds like you have some solutions to each of the questions and concerns.
We need to get him on the Parking Committee.
So I, I think we're going to have to just stop this discussion for the, for this evening.
I would like to just ask staff if you could do some research as to if Charlie was able to come up with anything. Because I don't want this to sit, I would like to get a resolution to this in the next, I mean, what's a reasonable time, month? Can we have it back up so we can?
Well, the new Charlie doesn't start till May, I think.
Well, we don't need the new Charlie.
We need the old Charlies.
We can just find out if the old Charlie was able to get any information. And then, so that we can have another constructive conversation as to what makes the most sense. And you've presented your case and you've got some very valid points.
Absolutely.
Good thoughts there, we just need to modify.
So I think you're right. The, the platform is great, we just need to, to get some finite details squared away with staff and then come up with the solution that we can present and then approve. So we can see that finite change. All right, thank you, thanks.
Thank you. So I guess if we could maybe bring up this discussion point.
What do you want them to research?
Well, I'd really like to know, A, does it make sense what Mr. Renteria is suggesting? And B, what would be a reasonable expectation for revenues? I would also like to know if any research was done on. I would also like to know if any research was done on electronic, um, pay programs, whether it's for the parking lots, or I think the cost would be just too obscene-
They're expensive.
Yeah, along the city streets, but-
And where do you want them, do you want them?
Just in parking lots.
The other thing is the three hour, the three hour option, we're willing to look at that on the side streets.
Yeah, so three hours on the side street, except for Jefferson, I'm, I'm okay with two hour on Jefferson, I think that's worked well. Um, but, um, exploring either A, free parking for everybody in the lots with a tag, does that make sense? Or B, in the parking lots, does it make sense to put in a, um, electronic meter and eliminate leases and people just pay based off of?
You're gonna want people that have leases.
Okay.
The people that have leases have them for a reason. They want their spot, especially in the, in the Third and Washington. They want, uh, they want covered parking. They pay for it.
Right.
But they want that spot.
Okay.
And so I, I, the thing is, I think those people that have leased spots, I was just talking about it with the net, they, they want those spots. They wanna know that they have the spots to go to when they, when they need to go there.
Yeah, Main and Valley, you can't-
It's all, it's all but leased out, I think.
It's all leased out on a multi, multi-year basis. Your lot next to the fire department, you've got excess demand for those spots as it is.
I think it does make sense though to, cause she's right, we've got great map that shows all this parking. But there are all those ta- spots are taken. So it does make sense to maybe look at those lots and try to determine, A, can we, can we separate it out, any amount of parking that can be for public use? And then if it is, are, are those lots, should they be free? Or should they have an electronic payment machine available?
And the, and the reason why we looked at some of the ones that have all leased spots, to convert some of those leases over to, um, during the timeframes, you know, from overnight, to allow those spots to be available during, you know, the off period where they don't wanna- So they pay a reduced rate compared to a twenty-four hour lease. So that way people could use those spots. That was the intention behind that, you know, the three categorizations that we have. You know, the hourly, the, the, the twelve hour lease, and then the twenty-four.
The other thing is, some people that work downtown, or that live downtown, they work overnight, sleep during the day. So to go to three hour parking, if they can't get a spot when they get off work, because they work at the hospital, and then they get home at eight AM and there's no place for them to park, we're gonna expect them to get up every three hours and move.
No, 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 they would have leased, they would have leased spot.
But what, what if we made all parking lots free?
Yeah. No, 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 I, I, I-
Right, yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, perfect sense. I, you said, don't get rid of leases, I think that makes a lot of sense, not necessarily get rid of leases. But I still think to, to Eric's point, is if we've got parking lots, promoting parking lots, we need to try and have some amount of public parking in those parking lots.
Well, and there are. But, well, I mean, so the one on Valley and Main is mostly for, um, the police station.
Burlington Apartments has-
Burlington Apartments is the most.
Sixty some percent of those lots.
Either way, there's a lot that are taken the whole time. And I, I was lucky enough to find one one day when I was, so I mean, it just has to do with how far you're not willing to walk, but that's kind of the whole scene for downtown.
Well, I've never had a problem.
Right, and, and I don't usually have a problem either. And in fact, I will park farther away, because I am able-bodied and I can walk. And I should walk. Um, I think our current parking program is, um, is so much better than what it was. And I don't wanna make any dramatic changes, because we've just put a lot of time and effort into all the signage and, you know, trying to get it straight with everyone, and for us to say, well, let's, let's scrap the whole thing and start again. I don't think that's-
I don't know how to put together a formula for how much revenue we'd ever get off of three hours and potentially leased spots under a completely different, I, I, I wouldn't, I, I couldn't put a number out there that would mean, mean anything.
So there are aspects to, that, you know, that we can change with a relatively low cost, which would be the three hour change to the, to the four hour. And I think that would be okay, but for us to say, you know, what staff did and signage, for it to just be like, well, I don't think that's fair.
Well, and it's, we're not as concerned, I don't think, from a staff perspective about whether the time and effort we put in and dollars that we put into this, putting up the signs to do it. Um, but you've got a lot of people who have spots that have had a structure that they've used for years, and now you're talking about a complete wholesale changeover, and you're, you're gonna have some that'll be just fine, and you'll have others who are not gonna be happy, and-
And I'm convinced, as Nick has already alluded to, that we, to get rid of the leased spots would be a mistake. And, and I don't think that that's probably the correct, but I do feel like there needs to be some level of rotational public parking in each, in each lot that we've got. And how we set that up, I don't know. But I think we've all agreed-
One lot you can't get it on, but-
I think we've all agreed that we like the idea of switching the, the, uh, north-south in the remaining streets from four to three hours.
Yep.
Is that, we have a consensus on that?
I believe so, yes, yes.
I'm down with that.
So that's one change.
Is, is that a thing that you want the parking committee to review and come back to you with?
Yes.
The same, or do you, would you rather just have it as a resolution to, to do that?
I, I don't see any reason why we need to send it back, I think we're just gonna make that change. I, that's my opinion, you-
Well, I think we have the, I, I think we-
I think they put a lot of legwork in, I think we need to run it by them first.
Right, that's what I mean. We have the committee for a reason, I mean-
Run it by them.
Value their input and their expertise that they've been putting in all these long months on that.
How, how long will that take?
We, we meet once a month generally.
Okay, I just don't wanna wait another six months.
For the last four months.
Yeah, we meet once in the last four months.
Can we plan on meeting so we can talk about that?
And part of that's identifying the streets, making sure we, not just saying it's four or three hours, what are all the streets impacted?
Yeah, so that gives staffs and clients to know that before your meeting. Perfect.
There is there signage that says four hours on, on the side streets?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we'd have to change those signs.
Right.
How many signs are there?
That's, yeah, so we just have to kind of understand. So I think it'd be best if it went to the, the committee first before.
Okay.
Talk about it next time.
Okay, thank you.
You guys can look up the cost on the pay boxes too, but I don't, I, they've, larger communities use those and I think they work out really well. I'm just wondering about the cost effectiveness on a, the size of town.
Maybe, a better pay box, maybe it doesn't have to be-
Whatever we do, let's not go with the yellow box that you have to shove coins into.
And what we talked about with Tiger was also the potential for doing some of those type of electronic, um, pay at the corner type meters. You had meters once before, you would be returning to that, but it'd be a different style. So I mean, it's, it's something that could be a part of that conversation though.
Yeah, I think the ones where you can use a credit card are nice.
Or your phone.
People don't have cash on.
You wouldn't, I don't know that you would do anything out, except for that anymore today, I mean-
I don't know, I-
They'd have to accept some type of coinage cash in or credit card, debit card.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that, uh, unless staff has any other questions for us, I think that wraps up that discussion item.
You have two other discussion items.
Yes, that discussion item though.
Yes. Do you wanna do them?
Let's move on.
Sorry, that's the reason why I came up, because I thought you were done with the parking.
Right, snow removal.
Snow removal.
Go. That's why you have the clicker.
That's why I was up here.
I was like, are you gonna review the?
Uh, so, uh, I went back with staff, um, and we talked about kind of the downtown, the CBD, snow removal. We talked about what we do, uh, we looked at some of the other communities, uh, and kind of what they do, a variety of them. And then I kinda have some recommendations on what we would like to do. So our current procedures, this is a lot of text, I didn't have a lot of fancy pictures to put in, but these are notes for me to try and talk about. So snow removal, uh, starts, the CBD is plowed, because there's a, most of the downtown is in an emergency route of some sort. So as soon as it starts snowing, any sort of measurable, we start pushing that. Um, soon as those, those routes are done in the emergencies downtown, they move on and either help one emergencies or start on secondaries. Uh, as you, this is, this is something that we put out every year, uh, we put it out in the newspaper, uh, twice during the winter time. And then we also have it available on our website. But these are our emergencies, they are signed that way on the streets, uh, that there's no emergencies. Most people that live on a snow emergency know that there is no emergency. Uh, I just wanted to give you an idea of the, of what happens when we push, this is down Jefferson Street. When we come and push down Jefferson Street, we push open the lane of travel first. And so what happens is the snow gets ditched right in the backside of those cars. We don't come back until after, uh, all the, all the other roads have a clear path open, and then we start curbing. In, in this case, we do two different things. One, if there is not a measurable snow that we are going to be hauling out of downtown, we push it all the way to the curb, which ends up causing kind of that no man's land between property owner and city snow, kinda creates the mound. If we are going to be removing the snow, we typically leave that snow ridge out, a, a foot to three from the edge of the curb, so that way our, our payloader, our loaders can get in and actually operate. If we push it too far, uh, we're not able to get most of the snow. So that is why when you see the bigger snows, you kind of pull up to a parking spot, there's a big ridge of snow, kind of where you're wanting to park. Well, we leave that there, because we wanna be able to get it out.
And that's the same way you do it in the neighborhood, correct? You, you do the plow lanes first?
Correct. But in the neighborhoods, we, when we go to curb, we curb them all the way. In the downtown, when we, because if we're going to remove snow, haul it out, we do not push it all the way to the curb. And so that's, that's the difference.
Then you come back with a bucket.
Correct, yep. So I explained most of that. Typically, we do that in the evening time, when most of the general parking downtown, uh, is vacated. So, uh, staff and I looked at several communities. They're not comparable communities, but they're communities that have varied array worth of snow removal. West Des Moines, they always give snow removal presentations at the, um, the Iowa chapter of the Public Works Association. They have a lot of money to spend on snow removal, so keep that in mind. They have some of the best equipment, they have like four different treatment styles, so they have quite a bit. So Iowa City, they have, um, an interesting setup. They do odd even throughout town on their snow emergencies. But they do not call snow emergencies until they have over eight inches of snow. Because if they call a snow emergency, most of the college kids don't know that there's a snow emergency, and they're parked on the wrong side of the road, and they end up towing two hundred plus vehicles. So they have the policy in place to do odd even, but they don't use it, because they don't want to, because it's more hassle on the backend. Um, so I, I can print this all out, that was my intention, was to print this out and then give it to you to read. I didn't wanna belabor this conversation too late. Um, but their district, their downtown district, they don't have parking from two AM to seven AM. So there's no parking allowed downtown. So that is, that's a big difference from what we're talking about. They also have four or five staff that are dedicated to that type of operation. Uh, West Des Moines, in their, uh, they basically say, if there's, if they call a snow emergency, get off the streets. An all-out prohibition. There's no dedicated emergencies. Uh, they don't really have a dedicated downtown district like we do, it's a little bit different. Keokuk, uh, so we go from one extreme, parking prohibition all over, to Keokuk where, uh, they par- they plow the main roads, but they do not have snow emergencies. And they very rarely ever haul snow out of the downtown. As you can see, the, the, the person that we talked to had been there for numerous years. The only time they hauled out was when they had eighteen inches, otherwise they just push it and let it be. Uh, Davenport, uh, some of the things that I brought from my recommendation was tied to their downtown district. Um, they have a snow emergency and they call it into place, and they have, uh, what they do is they, man, why am I not reading it? They have a snow emergency for the emergency routes, and then a SNECAN emergency is put into place from ten PM to six AM, uh, each night. And so there's a total ban of parking in the areas that they call that. So they have a downtown and then the campus area that they call that. Dubuque has a, a similar type function, uh, where they have, um, no, they don't. I apologize. Anyway, get to my recommendation. Just skip Dubuque. Well, I remember reading it today as I put the presentation together, but that's the nuts and bolts of what I wanna do. Um, in reviewing it, and, and speaking with the police chief and my staff, I think that odd even opens itself up to a lot of problems from an enforcement side, um, and then signage, and then people knowing where are they supposed to park. Um, so my recommendation is that we would add a parking ban as a part of a, a secondary snow emergency for the CBD or the downtown area. That would have the east-west, north-south roads. Uh, east-west being first, uh, there's more storefrontage on east-west. So we would, we would call a snow emergency into place, and then we would do, you know, Valley, Washington and Jefferson Street. And then the next night, do, uh, north-south roads.
So basically it'd be an e- snow route, east-west, snow route, north-south.
Correct.
So total parking ban on east-west, that's what I wanna get out to the people that are wanting, okay.
I, I do think that the ten PM to six AM was a, was a pretty good part of it. Uh, we probably would start operations before that. We typically run, uh, seven AM to seven PM with two different shifts. Uh, so the staff would come on, work at seven. It, it's hard to put all of this into perspective of the way it's gonna operate with a snowstorm. Um, so if you have snow that ends in the morning, that night that the snow ended, you may actually be able to have this go into place. But if it doesn't start, start until the end of the afternoon, you won't do this until the following day. But typically, when we're doing our current operations, we're able to have snow removed from the downtown within forty-eight to seventy-two hours, which I didn't highlight in the previous conversations with Davenport and Dubuque. But they're about the same. Getting things done in seventy-two hours after the final snow had fallen, that's pretty typical for them. So I understand when, when we got the big snows this year, and there was concerns about parking downtown. Parking prohibition would, would not have cleaned up the snow any faster in the parking spots. What would have allowed is for some more ease and space to load the snow into. And so maybe some more spot, one or two spots would have been more available, but, um, in the end, I think it would have just been more function for our staff. So I don't know what your thoughts are.
So would there be additional signage, or people just would be educated on this?
We would have to do some education, but it would be called throughout a snow emergency. Um, so similar to the way we call a snow emergency now, we use the radio station, uh, then our, our website through press releases. Um, and we do snow emergencies rouse, it, snow emergencies now, if you live on a emergency route, you're notified that way.
And Nick, is this gonna help get the snow out, so there's not only additional parking places, but people don't have to step over that big mound of snow to get into a store?
It will, but it will ha- it will take some time.
But it will help expedite the process.
I don't know that it's gonna help expedite.
Okay.
It, it's gonna, in my opinion, it's gonna take about the same amount of time as it's taken for us to get snow removal or the snow hauled out, as it has in the past.
And you're still gonna have no man's land.
You're still gonna have some snow, some no man's land. Unless we, we spend the money for the equipment and the staff to go in there and do some of the no man's land type snow, it's, it's just a part of living in Iowa, you know, it's just part of, you know.
I propose we may wanna put something for that in place. It has been rough for retailers down there this year, and people are staying away. They, they perceive it's, it's too difficult to shop down there.
Yeah, but, but Dick's pays to have their lots cleared.
Part of the thing that- Part of the thing that Nick is having to deal with as he tries to do this, um, you have seven folks dedicated each shift?
I technically have eight each shift, but one of them is typically running kind of coordination efforts. Um, so, so when we get into snow removal process, I have a, I have a staff of eight from seven o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock at night. And then I have a switch over at seven PM to seven AM, and I have another eight staff.
How many subdivisions have been added since you put in place that, that?
Since I have been in Burlington, uh, there have been probably six subdivisions. And so as good as growth is, you know, the Zizer, uh, one, like Pearson had some extra put over there- Like Pearson had some extra put over there, Mr. Cahill had over there, you know? They're not very long stretches of road, you know, they're half a mile at most, but they add time and they add, you know, operation of, of pulling in, turning around, getting back out. I only have seven people.
So let me, I want to comment on this. I heard your comments with regard to the odd and even, and I can understand the enforcement. But I will say that if we were to adopt an odd and even program, it would only be a matter of time for the average homeowner was educated to a point where they would just know that on an odd day of the month, I'm parking on the odd side of the street and on the even day of the month, I'm parking on the even side of the street. I understand that will also present complications and just problems in general. But I will say, so I did that ride along with streets a month ago. We had a snowstorm. Um, I, I thought it was a great opportunity for me to hop in the truck, rode around with Mr. Siegkin for about four hours. And I learned in that ride along that we need an odd and even system. And the reason I did that is we did South Hill and I bet it took him three times longer to do South Hill than it would have if we had had an odd and even system. And it didn't look near as good as if we had had an odd and even system. And I think to me, downtown snow removal, the solution is getting those guys off of the residential streets and into the downtown sooner, which can be done through an odd and even program. That's, that was the only way that I think that we're going to be able to achieve that.
The one thing that you do when you do odd even is you have to give them timeframe to park from one side to then have them shift. So what you, what you do do with, do do with that is, is you, you extend the timeframe of getting the curbing done.
Yep. But if you made this switch at noon where people are awake and, and you give them a two-hour time slot to get that, that everything moved over to, to the even side of the street.
Some people are awake.
I'm going to assume that most people are awake. But, um, uh, I think that at the end of the day, that they're going to look better. And, um, those guys are going to be able to move through those routes a lot faster. And I'm telling you, just those four hours we were with those guys, the number of back and forth and trying to squeeze through two cars. And, um, I, I think, did, did we hit a vehicle during that time?
Well, the once the storm, we hit eight, but that's, that was because.
I'm not saying it's because we weren't on odd and even, but I'm just saying the ease to the guys in the trucks, the amount of, the speed that they're going to have to be able to get that done, I think is going to be greater.
I guess I would advise caution on, on a, on a wholesale approach to that throughout town. If you look at the Orchard Plaza, I think it's called, where we tried the pilot program. Most of the people in that neighborhood, if you go over there, it's typically a mess. That is, that is supposed to be on odd even parking.
And why is it? Is it because if we had it throughout the whole community, everyone's going to notice?
I don't, I, I guess I don't have.
We have, we have people that are on snow routes that still get pu- pulled because they, you know, you know, this has been a weird year. We've had a lot of snow. I, I think our snow removal, removal in the city of, uh, Burlington's been pretty, pretty outstanding generally. And the, the downtown, I've always admired how they come, you guys come down with the loader and get out the mounds of hills, because we don't do that in neighborhoods. Uh, you know, so I, I would hate to jump off, you know, I think this has some merits. But I, I'm not ready to, to jump off and say, okay, we're going to do the whole town. Uh, because I don't think it's going to make it any faster. It might make it a little cleaner, but it's not going to make it faster. And I think when you go to a total ban of parking, as we continue to increase our downtown residents, it's going to get a lot tougher downtown if you have a total ban of parking for twelve to, to eighteen hours until you kick to the other side. That's just my opinion. I'm not a snow removal expert. I think these guys do, do a great job and I haven't, I, you know, this year's a little different.
John, I would encourage you and, and Linda and Andy, same thing, go on a ride along with those guys.
I, I live up on North Hill and they, they always got me clean.
I think there are probably some targeted areas that we should take a look at in, in some of the narrower streets. That was why Orchard was looked at is because it is a narrower street. I don't think they wanted it, but it was put upon them to do. I don't think it's fixed the problem, but.
There you go.
At picking one small street out of the same size, I don't think there's a great representation. I really think that we have the ability to benefit from it. Um, you know, talking to some of the guys that are driving those trucks, um, I didn't talk to all of them, but, but they seem to think that there was some merit to that too. So I, I would say it's something that we should definitely be considering. And maybe it's not the solution, but, um, I think it has the potential to be better than what we're, where we're at right now and provide more man-hours available to help with the downtown snow removal.
Well, I think, um, you know, we all have great opinions, but I think it's important for, you know, the, the drivers, the snowplow, uh, employees we have that are doing that on, on the daily basis when it's snowing. It's good to sit down with, you know, the other people who have the different perspectives and the different, uh, research that, you know, you've done and have that back and forth. And I don't think for us to have that back and forth right now, when we're talking about the downtown plowing, is going to be, um, as productive as we want it to be. That is definitely something that we need to possibly look forward to talking more about, but right now it's, we're just talking about the downtown.
I, I think if you're going to talk about snow removal, we just talk about snow removal.
I, yeah, because if I'm a resident in a neighborhood, I want to be upset.
You gotta use the same guys that clear the streets to clear the downtown, so.
No, I get that, but that's not what staff was instructed that we were going to discuss.
I, I've got several phone calls and texts though. Anytime we, we focus, I'm a downtown guy. I mean, my business was here. I, I live downtown. I shop downtown, but I get the phone calls and the texts. Anytime this comes up, the downtown is not any more important than a neighborhood. And a neighborhood is not any more important than the downtown. It's the same. And so I, I really, I really hesitate to focus on that, you know? Um, there are merchants that aren't located downtown that pay to have their sidewalks shoveled. They pay to have their parking lots shoveled and taken care of. And we, we do a good job cleaning the streets. I think our city staff works hard on doing that. But we're not doing, you know, we're not going to do no man's land because it's not really our area to do. And we don't go through the neighborhoods when the snow is piled, piled up with this taking parking spots. So if we're going to do something, it's going to either have to be all or nothing. And I don't think this is an all or nothing's solution at this point. That's just my, that's my opinion.
The thing is that we asked staff to come up with some sort of solution or something for the da- am I correct in saying that? That is why you were.
Correct, we did.
And, and I never, well, I hope not, that we weren't going to try and put that in place this year.
Right.
To me, it was a conversation of while we're in the moment of snow, that we think about how we want to make changes moving forward for, for following years.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think we need to do something. I just think we need to do it on a more macro point of view so we can just come up with what the program's going to look like for the entire community.
I, I guess that's what my point was, Matt.
So, okay. And I guess I'm okay and I appreciate the work that you've, you've done on this. And I'm okay with downtown being a pilot project and we pilot this and we see if it works and if it's feasible and we're happy with the result, then take it out and into the rest of the community.
Well?
Thank you, Nick.
Any suggestions on how I move forward?
I, I, my position is, is I would really like to explore something that's going to affect, um,
You want more?
The residuals as well. Because I think, we can't pull people from the residuals to work downtown until they're done. Well, if we can make that job more efficient and easier, then we can get them here quicker. I think that's going to be the catalyst to improving downtown snow removal. That's my opinion. So if that's an odd and even system, fine. If that's a designated area.
You might get them to the downtown quicker and a changeover between one side to the switchover to the other because they're waiting for the cars to move over.
And that'd be a great opportunity to do that.
But they still have to go back to the other side of the residential.
And I understand that.
I know you're really passionate, mad about the odd even, but that makes my brain hurt. I just think a ban would be easier for people.
There's a lot of signs that are incorporated with that.
It is, and it's hard and I, people are busy. They can't remember if it's odd or even what day of the week it is. I mean, seriously. I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
The citywide will call into question your streets that have parking on only one side. Because they have the same issues with how do you get snow removed and yet you are signed to only park on one side. Um, some cities have gone to, they do citywide, you park on one side of the street on an, on four days of the week and you park the other side three days of the week. Uh, that's certainly a solution you could do. Uh, if you do what you're talking about, Matt, you're somehow have to address those, those streets. And I don't know how you would ever sign streets that are only, that are no parking on one side for part of the year and do an odd even during a s- a, a snow removal piece. You've got a lot of parts of town that have, that we, the speci- the specific reason that we went through the process of only doing a test area where you're rotating from one side to the other, there just physically is not enough places to park vehicles on this, on the street because you have so many people that don't have off-street parking in residential neighborhoods. Um, you're going to have a lot of folks who are not pleased with that kind of a solution because you're, you're, you've created a so- a situation where you don't have a place to put cars.
And I do want to clarify, I, I would not allow any parking on emergencies as a part of that odd even.
Right, that would be a ban.
Emergencies would still be part of the ban.
They would maintain the same.
And then the ref.
Sort of.
What I'm trying to get at is now you already eliminate the parking from the emergencies and now you're sh- you're putting them on the streets where now they have to choose one side or the other. Not that that's not beneficial from a operations standpoint, but you have a, you have some capacity issues on parking in certain areas.
And I think that's probably the biggest hesitation we have because this, this discussion four years ago, the last time it hit was a very emotional one for folks who were not happy with us talking about doing a every other side of the street discussion. I don't know, Chief, if you have any comments from when that discussion was held or?
You better have plenty of overtime, Chief.
His eyes were rolling back there.
No, I, I, I remember it vaguely. I wasn't in the position as a, as I am now, but, uh, and so Chief Beer would probably remember it more vividly than I do. But up on Orchard Place where, or Orchard Street, uh, part of the problem was they started talking about, uh, snow removal, uh, and moving from one side to the other. And when I've been up there, uh, when we just started talking about enforcement, it's very difficult because the, I think the people are thoroughly confused about what side of the street to park on, what day and, and when. And, uh, it's very hard for that enforcement. And if we do odd even, uh, all over town, then we just now, and, and still have the snow emergencies and then we have to go to the other streets also on an enforcement side of it and start looking for odd even vehicles and start ticketing more vehicles on top of what we already do on the snow emergency routes because they're parked on the wrong side of the street. So on the enforcement side of it, it's going to, uh, be more labor-intensive for us to get out and do that and still answer our calls and then clear the snow routes and ticket those vehicles and then go back and.
But over time, those growing pains would be overcome and people would, would, at some point, they'd figure out that on an odd day of the month, they're parking on the odd day of the street.
I'm not so sure you have visitors and they may never.
I'm going to have to stop this conversation again as well because we need to move on and we can dedicate another three more hours, I think, to this discussion. Um, so can we put this on the, the next, uh?
Nick's still looking for direction.
Next work session to discuss.
Sure. We love talking about snow removal.
Sorry, Nick.
It's, uh.
I don't, I don't think we're going to come to a good place for you to have direction tonight. I would like to have this discussion put on for the next work session to continue.
Is there any further information that you would like?
Not for me, no. Thank you.
Do you, is there any such statistics of, um, what this does from an enforcement standpoint, if it's a ban versus the right or left? I don't know if anything exists.
I don't know how you.
I mean, there's a lot of entities you have to consider and I don't want to create more work for anybody. Ultimately, we want to make it.
I mean, you could look at the, you could look over the next week.
Easier for the plows to come through.
Someone could go to the, the pilot location and see how many cars are parked on the wrong side of the street. I mean, that's a very small mechanism to look at, but.
This is only being applied during snow emergencies, right?
Yeah.
I'm not talking about doing odd and even side outside of snow emergency.
For tsunamis and tornadoes and everything.
So it sounds like, oh, well.
I'll, I'll see what other information I can gather. I don't know what it's going to be, but.
Now that we've talked in circles.
And there may not be anything that exists. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Do we want to?
Marshalltown does, I think, like Monday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday on one side and Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday on the other.
For our next discussion item, are we going to?
Push it to the next, postpone it to the next.
Are we going to postpone it? Would it, would it, would it break your heart?
Is there somebody here we're putting out that?
Well, just maybe the public and, of course.
Okay.
No, you can't.
I think, I, I don't know if they can.
I can zip.
No questions, sorry.
So we're going to do it justice and no questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
You don't believe it, do you?
I don't.
All right. The reason I'm here is because earlier I mentioned that I wanted to ask the council to consider changing something that a prior council put into place, which is the allowance of use of trash cans during the leaf collection program. This is the, uh, resolution in our current ordinance as was back then. Uh, the program basically established his, for leaves is established by resolution. This is the resolution I was able to find that pertained to when the bag program for leaves first went into place. If you look in the back, you can see it was put into place, uh, September twenty-first, nineteen ninety-eight. So it's been in place for twenty years. Uh, the reason we pick up leaves the day after your garbage day is because your garbage can has been emptied. Now that evening, you can fill it for leaves and you set it out at the curbside for collection. And, um, I'm asking the council to consider, uh, discontinuing the allowance of trash cans as containers for leaves during the leaf collection program. Uh, handling the cans is more difficult than bags. It takes more time. People pack the cans heavily with leaves. Sometimes they have lids, sometimes they don't. If they don't, if you have rain, the rain collects in the can, just makes it heavier. If they have a lid, they expect you to put the can back where you got it and put the lid on it. You get complaints because the lids aren't on it. The lids go down the street, they get driven over. And the, the garbage men have to deal with that extra weight, have to deal with the customer wanting the can to be placed back. The lea- uh, the lids being placed back and it takes much more time. It's a lot more involved. If the leaves freeze in the can, they're picking up a can full of leaves and are having to try to shake it out. If they bump it on the hopper and it cracks, there's an issue and they're upset because you've mishandled their cans. And so what I'm asking is the council to discontinue the allowance of use of cans and that we will, uh, just rely and require the use of bags.
Three minutes. I'm, I'm in. We'll discuss it next week at the meeting.
The one point I'll make is that we sent out a late mailer because of the change to the cart program. And in that mailer, it had in there that we didn't have any information about the citywide cleanup program. It was under review. But it did say, this is the leaf program. These are the, how the program dates are. And that, yes, you can use the bag, you can use the can and you can even use the cart. And that is in existence for this fiscal year, which includes this coming spring's three-week program. This resolution is going to have to be changed and updated if we do make a change. Even if we didn't make a change, the, the, uh, paragraphs are not correct with the current ordinance. So I guess I would suggest that we continue this spring program as usual. Allow any use of the cans and the carts and come back with a resolution between now and before the fall program and eliminate them at that time.
I know we're going to talk about it next week. The only thing I'd say that I'd like to see different out of what's I, what you've proposed is that the homeowner have, be allowed the option to use their city-issued can only for leaf collection.
And the reason I, 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 I don't want to do that is because when you get into holiday weeks or inclement weather, that can can be tied up with leaves, we may not get there, then they're stuck with no place to put their garbage and they're having to put four-dollar trash tags or their one. Then they're stuck with no place to put their garbage and they're having to put four-dollar trash tags or they're wanting to keep a list of, hey. You need to let me get my garbage picked up in cans without tags because you haven't emptied my cart. So.
That's, we can talk about it next week.
Sounds good.
Next week?
No, what are we talking about next week?
You're wanting a resolution? I thought you were talking about doing that before.
By next week? We've got some time.
I gotta change the program for, in spring.
I'm not gonna change the spring program. We have time. Okay.
Yeah.
Just kidding, we'd like this next week.
I'm with you.
It's over three minutes, by the way.
Okay, are there any, um, additional comments? Are we done? Was that it? I put my things away. Yes, this was it.
Appointment.
Oh, appointments.
Appointment.
Appointment, I already, I didn't see any problems. Anybody else?
Yes, Nick, go ahead.
I have an item that I may be adding to the agenda. Um, we had a truck that was in an accident back in, uh, last, last calendar year. Uh, it has been totaled out and we have received, uh, an insurance payment of twenty-one thousand. Replacement cost for new item is upwards of one seventy to two hundred thousand dollars.
What truck?
Um, we won't be looking for something like that, but we'll be looking for something used.
What truck was it?
It was a fifteen-ton. There's a pickup that hit it at Summer and Harrison. So unfortunately, the insurance only paid out twenty-one thousand for replacement cuz that's, it was twenty, it was a, it was a twenty-year-old truck, so. You may be seeing that come at you. So. It's not ideal to do that, but it's something that was gonna have to be replaced in the next five to six years.
So you're looking to bring forward a resolution authorizing you to.
Go for, go forward to look for a used, uh, price up to a certain amount? Correct.
What's that amount?
If you want something within the last five years, you're probably s- talking eighty, ninety grand.
And your, your requirements are, I mean, you'll have some purchasing requirements on that for trying to hit, but. It, it's not like there's gonna have a huge market and you're trying to make some qualit- qualitative comparisons between vehicles that are out there on the market.
Use pricing is pretty tough to do.
And we'll have to figure out how we're paying for that, whether that is. Uh, I mean, it's, it's an unbudgeted amount, um, whether it, typically those would come out of road use tax, but.
And split with sewer?
And it's split with sewer, but depending on, given that it's an unbudgeted amount, we'll, we'll bring forward recommendations for. How we're trying to cover that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
We have adequate, regardless, we have adequate funds on hand to, to make it happen. It's just not.
We don't wanna, yeah. Uh, anything else from staff? Good? Yeah, good?
Everybody wants, the mayor wants everybody to wave at him. There you go.
All right. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay.
That's all.
You good?
I did wanna just point out, sorry, um, I know at least Nick and I are doing Southeast Iowa Days up at the Capitol next week. Through the, with the chamber. It's next week.
You better make a range.
Wednesday and Thursday. And then I, I'm not sure, you, you have a RagBri meeting then?
RagBri Thursday.
Thursday?
I think I'm signed up for that.
I wasn't sure if you were signed up, but if anyone was wanting to get signed up, I think you can probably still get signed up. It needs to be coordinated through Katie, uh, to get you registered and set up to go up to that. It's a decent way to be involved, uh, at the Capitol and also just really within the cohesive group of. Uh, Southeast Iowa that's going up together.
Yep, I'm on.
All right.
That's it.
That's everything. Uh, thank you all and good night.
Night.